Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 3, 2025 Northampton City Council Meeting. I'm Alex Jarrett. I'm City Council President, and I'll be presiding along with Vice President Rachel Maori. And I want to thank you, Councilor Maori, for presiding last council meeting while I was away.
You're welcome.
This meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. And the meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. I now call the City Council to order. Do you take the roll?
Counselor Dobbs.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Clemmer.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Moltke.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
And Counselor Roddenberg.
Here.
Council President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's highlights include establishing water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2026, a $40,000 free cash to economic development projects and initiatives order, an order to accept Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987, allowing the council to increase the school budget in certain circumstances, four renewal orders for home rule petitions. One is for ranked choice voting, another allowing non-citizens, and a separate one, 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in municipal elections, and an order preventing tenants from being required to pay brokers' fees for residential rentals. The first thing on our agenda is a public hearing, which was continued. And so we're going to do that likely short public hearing, and then we'll go to public comment. So that public hearing is a continuation of public hearing on 24.213 National Grid Verizon Poll petition for Park Hill Road. This is to install a jointly owned poll on Park Hill Road approximately 240 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Whittier Street. This was continued from March 20, 2025. And the update is revised plans now call for the poll to be located approximately 265 feet west of the center line of Whittier Street. And there is a revised petition attached to the agenda. There are no conflicts from DPW. So the hearing is still open, so we don't need to reopen it. And I would look to see if we have a representative from National Grid here that we could identify.
Ken Kriegel.
Great. Welcome. So yes, would you like to speak to any changes that have been made since the hearing two weeks ago?
Yes. We, all the butters met on site, along with Counselor LaBarge, and we found a better spot for the poll that was hidden behind a tree, so the resident didn't have to look at it.
Great. Glad to hear of that. Are there any questions from councilors? Counselor LaBarge?
Counselor, I have to say Verizon was absolutely excellent. Due respect of my three residents, everybody put their heads together. And I mean, put their heads together. We helped one of our residents with the mailbag situation, which was great. Secondly, was the little boy and his parent with the window, the bay window. It was moved. The pole was moved. And then our third resident, we spent quite a bit of time with her. I think it was a good hour and a half when we finally left, but she owns quite a bit of property, a long road up there. And she even showed them, you know, trees and bushes and so forth like that, which was great. I mean, we all saw something that, you know, for Verizon to look at sometime. So, but anyways, we all worked together with respect and dignity. Everybody was heard, their voices, and I'm very pleased as a city counselor. And thank you.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. Are there any other questions from councilors? Anyone, members of the public who would like to speak for or against or to comment on this petition?
I just want to-
Please come up to the microphone and identify yourselves.
Colleen George, one of the butters. And I'm grateful for everybody's work in this whole thing. It had a very good outcome. Thanks.
Great. Great. Any other comments?
So I say it to you mostly, and LaBarge, you know-
Your name, please, and city or town.
Brian Dell. Me and some of my neighbors are dealing with, I think, a much more profound issue in terms of trying to shape construction to our residential needs. And I'm so impressed with this model. I watched it last week. I've watched it this week. I can't believe you found a place behind a tree. I mean, there was a guy saying this is going to block my view, and now it's not. And that's, that's a victory. That's amazing. That's how government works, and that's awesome. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no hands on Zoom, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close, thank you. Go ahead.
Motion made by-
Yes, that's who I am.
Okay, seconded by Counselor LaBarge.
Just try out.
Oh. Okay. Whoever wants it. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and that item for approval will appear later in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, we come next to public comment. If you want to make a public comment, you can sign up at the sheet at the podium. And if you're on Zoom, you'll use the raise hand feature. And the raise hand feature is in the bottom menu bar. Click on react, and then raise hand if they haven't changed it. And if you're calling in by phone, you raise your hand by hitting star nine. And if you're having trouble raising your virtual hand, you can turn on your video and physically raise your hand. You can also submit a written public comment. You would email it to citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov, and it will automatically be sent to all councilors and will be part of the public record. So I'm going to alternate between people in the room and people on Zoom. And before you begin, please state your name and your city or town. And to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to a maximum of two minutes. And after two minutes, I or another counselor will ask you to please finish your sentence. We don't respond during public comment. Our council rules prohibit that. It is your time to speak to us. And you can speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. First person is Dan Brian Dell. Welcome, Dan.
My name is Dan Brian Dell. I'm from 22 Phillips Place. We're a small city, on the map because of our history, our environment, and our culture. A city has the people in it, and we've had a stable city of 29,000 people since 1950. The residential, decentralized business rezoning of Phillips Place poses catastrophic problems for all of us, something on which my neighbors are best positioned to speak, and I hope you'll listen. Unpopular rezoning and underplanned overdevelopment are happening citywide under a belief that increased apartment supply will force the market to bring down rents, justifying ignoring every issue residents raise. That is supply-side economic nonsense, conservative claptrap that was debunked last century. Developers make money and cut costs. Government's function is to counterbalance that with community interest. But gullible government facilitates and encourages it and casts communities as their opposition, falling into absurdity. High-density construction with its construction vehicles and tree removal is an effort to conserve the environment and reduce pollution? The same broken logic aims to reduce fossil fuels, not by increasing public transport, but acting as if no one has a car. Over 90% of Northampton households do. These are Boston-scale solutions to Boston-area problems. City Hall's torturing us out of cars through congested streets and parking problems because these apartments of the future will house future people who bike everywhere, on roads covered in potholes, under construction, dangerously underplowed, impassively clogged. The train is terrible, and public transportation is poor, but that'll force these imaginary people to revitalize the downtown. They'll see shows at the Calvin, dance at the Pearl, eat at our wonderful restaurants forced out of business by rising rents. Nightly out-of-town audiences used to fund the downtown take it up with the deadbeat, keeping those venues shuttered. Monied interests have used these nonsense solutions to trick this government, and we already have the stalled construction, overpriced downtown improvements to prove it. Right after the secret rezoning of the Phillips lot in 22, O'Connell took half a million dollars from the Community Preservation Board. They paid $315,000 for the apartment lot and took $500,000 from the city to spruce up his rental office. Why are we paying them to build an ugly, out-of-scale insult to the beauty of our community? A permanent Northampton De Holyoke cash funnel, a Public Works money pit contributing nothing but meager property taxes from a millionaire? This is super easy to solve, and the city council's set up to do it. You have exclusive legislative power. This is why. The town is the people, the history, the environment, and the culture, and the people are asking you to protect our history, preserve our environment, and reject this culture of rubber stamping and acquisition and acquiescence that seems to be coming from City Hall. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. On Zoom, Olivia Marshall.
Hi. My name's Olivia Marshall, and I am a Ward Three resident of Northampton. And today, I would like to bring to your attention the state of the sidewalks in Northampton. And I fell today because of the sidewalks. And that just breaks my heart, you know? I want to feel safe in my town. Luckily, I was not seriously injured, but not everyone is so lucky. And I just think that we need to bring more attention to this and maintain sidewalks better and more often because they get walked on a lot. And they just, they need attention. You know, and it's not, it's not just for people like me. I personally am in a wheelchair, but for anyone walking, for anyone with a stroller, for anyone biking. The sidewalks are dangerous, and we really need to pay more attention to them and fix them. Thank you.
Thank you. In the room, Carrie LaBounty.
Carrie LaBounty, Ward Seven, Northampton. Thank you for having me. I am here tonight to ask you to consider a yes vote on the opt-in for the school budgets. I see it as a, not as an end, but as a first step in having further conversation and dialogue, productive dialogue, not the sort of shame and blame, but really more thinking, consideration, problem-solving. I think if we continue to do the same things in the same ways, we can't expect a magical different outcome, right? So I think it would behoove us to do our due diligence together. I think we'll do it better together, to consider options. It does not mean there will be a different end result. We may have exactly the same result, but I think it does make a difference to ask the questions, because that's what we're here to do. Ask the questions to see what is the right thing, what's the next best thing we can do. And I hope that it would be something that would continue on besides a one-time thing, right? That we can meet together to think about, think about these things throughout the course of the year, so that it's not about who sits on these bodies at any given time, or a cult of personality. That really is about a process that we have together. So I hope you'll consider yes. Thank you for having me, and I so appreciate your work.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Amber Clooney. Welcome, Amber.
Thank you.
Up, we are, sorry, Amber, we're not able to hear you very well. It's still very faint.
How about now?
Still very faint.
Uh, can you come back to me?
Yes, absolutely. We'll go in the room to Benjamin Spencer.
Hello, everyone. Benjamin Spencer. I live in Northampton. I'm here tonight to just offer my support for the appropriation of $40,000 free cash for economic development projects and initiatives here in the city of Northampton. You know, there's a lot of exciting things happening in the city, and the Picture Main Street project getting underway next year. It's really vital that we support our downtown businesses. This is one way that the city's working towards that goal. I think that there's plenty of evidence that investing this kind of cash pays for itself. And, and I think it was a good signal to our downtown business owners how much we're in, here for them. As an aside, I noticed in tomorrow's paper, there's going to be an article about the Faces location coming back to life. The folks from Shop Parathyre- Therapy are moving in there. I think there's been maybe three or four other announcements recently about what had been vacant storefronts now being occupied by businesses downtown. And I just think it's a very exciting time for the city of Northampton, and I'm always glad to see people investing in the city and looking forward to the years ahead. So I wanted to just be sure to put in a pitch for that. And then, just if I may, to the person who was concerned about sidewalks, don't know if I have the exact numbers right, but I remember from last year, a significant amount of money was appropriated for sidewalks in the city. The Leeds Bridge, the Hotel Bridge project got shelved, I guess, for lack of a better word. And the monies that would have gone to that project are going to be used on sidewalks throughout the city. Certainly understand the concern. There's sidewalks in my neighborhood that could use some attention as well. So I just felt that it was important to mention to the room that there's some work that's being focused on the sidewalks as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Amber.
Thank you. Is this better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Amber Clooney, Ward Five. First, I just want to say that I hope the council will vote to opt in. But the main issue I want to talk about tonight is something that happened last month. Last month, Counselor Clemmer referenced in the March 6 city council meeting, having looked up the hire dates of two city employees who had given public comment the day before, seemingly in an attempt to discredit their public comments about being senior hires. I was really horrified by this, and I wrote to my ward rep and council president, Alex Jarrett, asking him to discuss this publicly with the council, but he said he didn't think it was necessary to have a public discussion. I think what Counselor Clemmer did is a bullying and intimidation tactic and has a chilling effect on free speech. Things like this make people think twice before they give public comment. I understand that a lot of public information may be available about a person, but when a sitting city councilor uses their position to look up an individual, in this case, city employees, to check on them, and then says that they did that in a public meeting, that's an intimidation tactic. It's saying, I'm in a position of power, and I checked in on you personally. I use my position of power to check in on you as an individual. This makes people uncomfortable. It makes people feel threatened, and it makes people think twice about speaking out. This hasn't been discussed publicly at city council, so we are left to wonder, do the rest of you think this is okay? If I give public comment, well, what if you look up my address, or whether I paid my excise tax on time and mention it at the next meeting? So I'm requesting the council discuss this publicly because I want to know how the rest of you feel about it and whether or not you are committed to protecting our free speech rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Andrea. Welcome. Your name and city or town, residents.
My name is Andrea Munson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Northampton Association. I am a resident of Springfield. So, you know, I've only been in my position for a few months. And from all of the meetings that I've had with different business owners or residents or organization leaders, I keep hearing the same thing. Well, back in the day when Northampton was awesome, or back in the day when we were thriving. I think Northampton still is the best city around. As someone who lives in Springfield, who has a business in Springfield, I find myself here. Even before I took the position as the DNA Executive Director, I find myself here a lot. I'm here in support for the $40,000 allocation for economic development. I think that Northampton still has that opportunity to be the best version of itself, but it does start with making Northampton a place that people want to come to. And so some of the events that the DNA is looking to put on include the revival of The Taste. Now, The Taste was one, was once this great thing that happened for four days, and now it's only one day. But rest assured, I just came from a four-hour meeting with my events committee on how to revamp The Taste to make it even better than the last couple of years that, that the DNA has put it on. But support like this, the $40,000 in economic development funds, that would go to support some of the lift that we take when we put on The Taste, which is about a $30,000 to $40,000 $40,000 ticket event. I would argue that $40,000 is not enough for economic development for downtown Northampton, but it's definitely something that would be well-used, well-appreciated, and that would help us position Northampton again as the place that people want to come to. We've been working hard to revamp Arts Night Out and working on a rebrand and working on getting more businesses involved and getting more events happening on Fridays, not just art galleries, but also performances and music venues and... I know we all remember Arts Night Out back in the day when everybody...
So that was time, if you could just finish your sentence.
All's to say, it's money well-spent that should really go to economic development. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Elizabeth.
Hello.
Welcome.
I am just trying to click on my video, but it doesn't seem to work. I'm Elizabeth Roblika. I live in Northampton. I'm here with, here we go, I'm here with Bob Volenger from the Volenger Farm, Ward Seven, North Farm. We are here to ask your support for item 10 on your agenda, which is seeking your approval for the Volenger APR, which will be an agricultural restriction given by Bob Volenger to Kestrel Land Trust to protect 122 acres of farmland on North Farms Road, permanently protected as agricultural land, as well as protect the forest. We're here to answer any questions, so we'll stick around. But I just wanted to introduce ourselves so that you know we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in the room is Thomas.
Hello, I'm, I'm Thomas Strout. I reside at Eight Caddy Street in East Hampton. I have lived here for the last couple of years in Northampton. Just here to say I'm in favor of the appropriation of $40,000 for the economic development projects in Northampton, and specifically to support the work of the DNA and the connectivity to the business community that Andrea is involved with as we head into the Picture Main Street project. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, Robert Bolres.
Can't seem to start the video. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address tonight and to encourage you to reauthorize the sending of our home petition on ranked choice voting back to the legislature. Preparing for this tonight gave me the opportunity to revisit the very happy days I spent with Councilor Moulton on the Charter Review Commission, and then the time I spent as the Chair of the Ranked Choice Voting Implementation Committee, which sent you a report in February of '22. You voted unanimously to send the petition to the legislature, which arrived in April. Despite the very persistent diligence of Representative Sabadosa and Senator Comerford, who I know have worked very hard on this bill because other legislators have told me so, it was not enacted. In the first year, in the 11th hour, we thought we were very close for approval. It did not happen. In the next legislature, we thought that we were going to be part of a small group of two or three petitions that the legislature were going to allow to be enacted to see how it went. That did not happen. One is left with the undeniable conclusion that our petition did not enjoy leadership approval, a fatal condition. Why am I here now, asking you to send it up again? What has changed, you may ask? Well, several things. As I sent you, as I sent you earlier, we will now be part of a group of eight to 10 municipalities that have ranked choice voting petitions at the legislature. Boston is expected to join in early April. It is my hope that the critical mass of millions of voters represented in these municipalities will encourage the legislature to work on our bill. Over this legislature's spending, I'm talking about transparency.
So that was time. If you could just finish your sentence and make sure also to say your city or town if you haven't. Thank you.
Yeah, I live in Florence. Thank you so much. Hopefully, we will talk about this again. Please do vote to send the petition back to the legislature.
Thank you very much. In the room, Peter Kekos.
Hello, City Council, President Garrett, Jarrett. I want to, first of all, thank you for your support and for all that you do for the betterment of our fair city. And secondly, I'm here to give you a little update on the resolution. So glad, I and so many are so glad that you passed in last year, about this time, to ask for a ceasefire, was a resolution, and also for a resumption of humanitarian aid to Gaza. And I'm here to give you a report to say thank you, and, but what we have now is even more dire. So there was a ceasefire that happened, that began and lasted for five or six weeks. And then, then the Israeli occupation forces decided to begin a massive invasion, one night, 100 jets, US jets, by the way. They have blocked humanitarian aid of any kind since March 1st. So there's no food, there's no water, there's no tents for shelter, there's no medicine. They are killing, in large numbers, health care, health care workers. So the situation is even worse now than it was last April. And I'm here to say that we hope that you'll be with us the next time we come forward to pass yet another resolution to end the horrible genocide that is being laid out before us. Each, each evening that we're here gathered in Northampton, thousands of people die and tens of thousands are at risk. Don't listen to the numbers you see on TV and in the news. They are only, they are only numbers that have been certified in a hospital. All the hospitals have been bombed out, so no one knows how many people are dead under the rubble, missing. So I ask you to please pay more, pay attention to this as best you can, and let us be a city that leads the way. My last comment is from the Book of Genesis, where God confronts Cain after killing his brother Abel.
So that was time, so, and that was, that was your sentence.
That was my sentence?
Yeah. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to hearing from you again. On Zoom, Meg Robbins.
Hi, thank you. Meg Robbins, Ward Four, and I want to thank you very much for placing the discussion about our city opting in to Mass Law 44, Chapter 329, which allows you to increase a city budget for school district priorities you find to be underfunded in a mayoral budget. Municipalities that have adopted this law have done so through the same scrutiny and intermunicipal discussion that I hope you have had during the learning year you requested last May. State legal opinions have been tested with this law over nearly four decades. To paraphrase the DLS, the city council cannot increase any amount recommended by the mayor in the annual budget on a given budget. With this one exception, that only applies in cities that have accepted it, where a council may, by a two-third vote, increase the amount recommended by the mayor for the city school department, provided the increase doesn't make the total budget exceed the city's Prop Two and a Half levy limit. Given we have a strong mayor charter that leaves our city budget, budget ultimately in one person's control, this legislation allows council to exercise the ability to increase an annual budget when they see fit, the same way you are now able to legally reduce it. In these astonishingly turbulent times, it seems, no matter your level of confidence and the expertise of a mayor to assemble a budget that best meets the educational priorities of our city, opting into this 1987 law allows you, as a body, to exercise the simple oversight that is responsive to what you determine as critical needs when the fixed mayoral agenda does not. I want to be very clear that I'm absolutely not drawing any direct comparison, but as a reflective historian and a citizen astonished by what is happening in our nation today, we would be wise to have this safeguard, check, and balance in place. Please protect our cherished democratic process and our little city in an opt-in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the room, Nathan Chung.
Hi, Nathan Chung, Northampton resident. I'm going to play some audio on my phone. Please stop me if that's not okay. Is that okay or not okay?
It's okay.
Okay, thank you. This is from the March 12th censure meeting?
R25-223, Resolution Censuring Council Rothenberg for Conduct During Public Safety Dispatch Call, February 18th, 2025. Whereas, Section 2.3 (small b) of the Northampton City Charter states, no city council or any member of the city council shall give orders or directions to any employee of the city appointed by the mayor, either publicly or privately.
I'm going to stop there, and it goes at length. Basically, it's a three-page resolution reading those laws violated potentially and also having a 1 hour 47 meeting about it. This is your last comment by, public comment by Waterford School Committee Member Michael Stein, two weeks ago, in the city council?
And I would behoove you all to clarify going forward, when you are evoking violations of anything, you actually cite what is being violated and how it's being violated.
I'll just read it out for the transcript, for clarity. I would behoove you all to clarify going forward, when you are evoking violations of anything you actually cite, which what is being violated and how it's being violated. So I would argue that's a pretty blatant contradiction of what has happened with the city council. I actually wrote to him on Monday morning to clarify, asking for clarification. He hasn't written me back, but I asked him until Tuesday next week. So I think he might be openly making a misstatement to confuse the public for his political grandstanding and also for boosting his political ally. It's not a healthy purpose, in my opinion. There is a history of broken trust and broken relationship with Member Stein. As you know, I submitted an 11-page report on February 20th about his conduct.
Thank you.
Last moment. So I would ask you to consider the implication of the opt-in order in a currently very unhealthy school committee with a very dishonest member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Mark. Your name and city or town, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Wonsley, calling from Ward Six. I'm the Conservation Director at Kestrel Land Trust. Hold on, I'm trying to turn my video, it's not working, but that's okay. I'm also here to encourage your support of the agricultural preservation restriction on the Volenger Farm on North Farms Road. This is one of the largest unprotected farms remaining in the city of Northampton and one of the last active farms on North Farms Road, giving it its namesake. I've been working for, we've been working for years on this project with both the Volenger family and with the dedicated professionals at the Natural Resources Conservation Service in Amherst. And with your support, we're thrilled to bring this project to a conclusion. I'll be here with Elizabeth and Bob Volenger, also to answer your questions when this item comes up on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure. I know a number of people have mentioned they can't start their video. We do have starting a video enabled, so I'll just turn it off and turn it back on. I, I'll, I'll try to ask people to start their video as well. Usually that seems to work. In the room, Michael Beatty.
Hello, I'm Michael Beatty. I live in Northampton. Politicians in Brazil and South Korea who tried the equivalent of what Republicans tried on January 6th, 2021, have been dealt with the way that insurrectionist traitors are dealt with in functional democracies. US politicians refused to prosecute the higher-level criminals who perpetrated January 6th, and now we have an administration whose violations of the law, whose literal scorn for due process should be deeply troubling to those with knowledge of history and a conscience. This document lists some of the campaign contributions made by L.3 Harris to insurrectionist Republicans after the January 6th attack. L.3 Harris has directly contributed to the destruction of the rule of law, in my view. The latest I hear from the mayor's office is that they can't legally refuse anyone a business certificate based on the nature of the business. I would invite you all to consider revoking L.3 Harris's certificate based on their funding of insurrectionist criminals. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, Nina.
Hi, my name is Nina Shield, and I live on Phillips Place. I'm here to ask you to please consider revisiting the rezoning on Lot 32A197, which took place without transparency or public review. I'm confused as to why there seems to be a rush or pushes through when O'Connell is already in the middle of two stall projects in our neighborhood. There's now an empty lot behind our houses that kicks up dust and construction debris, and the church will stay empty until supposedly this third project is completed. Since there doesn't seem to be a rush on their end to finish what they started, and since their lots are a mess of incomplete drainage, hot holes, industrial equipment, trash nails, loose tiles, and other detritus that my kids like to pick up and play with, why not take the time to look at the implications for trapping parking pollution, internet sewage, and solar? Please truly ask why not? These are real practical considerations, not abstract ones. They're not anti-development considerations either, which I know they'll be painted as. If O'Connell broke ground on the townhouses that they had originally planned, you wouldn't hear from me on this issue again. Our almost 200-year-old Houses Foundation has already been damaged by this construction, and we're hearing the same thing from many of our neighbors. This is not a company that cares for the well-being of the people, and that's fine. They're a for-profit company, I wouldn't expect anything else. What I would hope is that our city would step in to say, let's just hold on a second, let's take one minute to think about what it might look like if we doubled or tripled one street's population, a street that's already a truck detour route, a street that's already dangerously crowded with parking, a street where children live and walk to school. When Picture Main Street gets going, it will be a central detour route for our whole end of Main Street as well. I know you've heard that there's a lot hanging on the building to save our downtown. That framing is disingenuous, and I'm certain there's no actual data to back it up. Please simply take a step back, come over to my crumbling, beautiful historic house, I'll make you tea, and walk you around our amazing neighborhood of amazing people. You'll instantly see why this is a problem and why we should pull back before it's too late. Run the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. In the room, Anat Weisenfreund.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit. It's not been a good day. It's not been a good few weeks. I find myself every day, as many of us, I think, waking up just so upset and going to sleep, so upset, just this, earlier this week, the Health and Human Services Administration fired everybody who oversees Head Start in Boston and four other regions, putting the program that I've spent the last 16 years of my life with even more at risk. But I'm here to urge you to please vote to opt in. We have to work together around our school budget, around our school funding. We have to listen to each other. Things are going to continue to get worse, and I think that if we vote, if you vote to opt in, we will have additional opportunities to collaborate and to discuss. All it does is add additional opportunities to work together, and so, please, we have to work together. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I got you. Okay, Jennifer James.
I'm going to try to not get too nervous, reading a letter I sent earlier in the day. My name's Jennifer James and I live in Ward Two on Roundhill Road. Dear Council, I'm writing in support of a vote to opt in, to give the power to add money to our school budget funding for this coming school year. As a parent of a graduate and current junior at the high school, I support the next steps in ensuring the possible growth of our city's support for education. Opting in is a powerful step in your work, contributing to the daily success of our dedicated administrator... dedicated administrators, teachers, and other workers of our Northampton Public Schools. As I have written in the past, our schools are the heart of our city. Our city schools, filled with talented and inventive staff, are a rich city resource that have been mindfully built over time, like a precious art collection or a fragile landscape. They must not be slowly dismantled because of poor stewardship, starved of funds that are essential to their survival. When you each work to put your stamp on the history of our town, I hope that you are moved to take the possibility to leave a legacy of your public service as a supporter of our families and the schools that are the beating heart of our town. Please vote to opt in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Agito.
My name is Andrea Agito, and I am the President of NACE. I'm sure most of you have seen the articles in the newspapers recently about our schools. It may be easy to point fingers and look down noses at overworked and stressed-out staff members, but I'm here tonight to say, this is on you. It's on the mayor, and it's on the superintendent. You have been hearing from Bridge Street staff and students for over a year now about how the staffing in that building, under this mayor's budget, could not meet the needs of all the children. NACE and community members started coming to you during last year's budget season, telling you that the mayor, if the mayor's budget were to pass, the results would be catastrophic. We begged you to opt in, so you could make changes to the mayor's budget that threatened to devastate our schools. Most of you, instead, chose to put your heads in the sand. Then, we returned in the fall of this school year to ask you to allocate additional funds to reinstate the positions that were cut. Again, you heard testimony from staff and students and community members telling you about how the loss of positions, services, and large class sizes were affecting the climate, culture, and instruction in each of our schools. You still chose to do nothing, and instead, listened to the austerity being touted by our mayor and financial director. You again chose to do nothing when over eleven million dollars certified in free cash, and the, and the mayor asked you to tie it up in years and years of capital improvement projects, while our students and staff suffered. There have been multiple grievances about the understaffed situation at Bridge Street School. One is being heard at Level Three at the school committee meeting on April tenth. Just one more sent, a few sentences. And a health and safety grievance that was acknowledged by the school committee, where they forced the superintendent to request forty thousand dollars for two additional paras in that school.
So that was time?
Yep, I have two sentences. This was below the bare minimum.
Sorry, you already went over, but with, had your one sentence, so I'm going to have to ask you to please stop talking.
We are grateful.
And thank you very much.
Please opt in tonight.
Next is Jane Potter.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't hear you. I apologize.
Don't apologize.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Jane Potter, Forty-two Phillips Place, and I'm here to speak, as a couple of other people did, about the proposed fifty-four-unit apartment complex on Phillips Place. And I wanted to say first that I'm, I believe in development. I think development can be great when done thoughtfully. I also am a huge, heartily, I am heartily in favor of more affordable housing, and I'm proud of our street and what we do so far. This is an historic district of old houses. What you might find interesting is the number of available units on the street right now. We have the new Bridge Street condos around the corner, right adjacent to us. This is a very wonderful complex of twenty-eight units, two-to-three-hundred-thousand-dollar units, ample parking, great landscaping. We have Coolidge Village condos. These are basically in my backyard, twenty-eight units. O'Connell's Post Office condos, there are eleven so far. I think they're allowed to have twenty-four. O'Connell also has ten condos or apartments planned for the church, which they seem to have decided to abandon in favor of this new project. We also have at Twenty-five Phillips, multiple units for rent, Twenty-nine Phillips, single-room housing available, Thirty-six Phillips, one-unit rental in an old house, Thirty-seven Phillips, three apartments, Fifty Phillips, six units, not all of them are rented, Fifty-One Phillips, one house was demolished to build four condos, Fifty-Nine Phillips, four-to-five units are currently being renovated to be available. Across the street from that, there are four units under renovation, not yet rented. I'd just like you to understand that this is a road that was built in the eighteen twenties. It's meant as a single-lane farm road. I've lived on this street happily since the nineteen eighties. There has been no upgrade to any of the infrastructure in the road, and we're afraid this is an accident waiting to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, N. Taskin.
Hello, I'm Nathan Taskin, better known as Nas. I live in Northampton, and I work at Northampton High School as a para. I also went to public school from grade kindergarten, twelfth grade, and I went to UMass, which is a public university. So I want to say that I'm a proud public, excuse me, a proud product of public schools. Once I was out of college, I worked at a private behavior school in Holyoke, and it was, had plenty of money, but was rife of abuse. Then I worked at a charter school in Springfield, which had way too much money, but was rife with neglect and abuse. And then I worked at Northampton High School, in the Northampton School District, and that was full of wonderful people, trying their best. It's a wonderful school, but it doesn't have enough money. Point is, I love working at public school. I believe in public schools, but the more we defund, the more we cut the budget, the more it hurts them, the more it hurts our kids. So please, please vote to raise the budget. I think we have the money, because we support our public schools. Also, free Palestine and get rid of L. Three Harris, cast it from the land. You don't want this on your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. In the room, Ace Taylor.
Ace Taylor, Ward Three. Evening, folks. I want to speak in support of re-upping the home rule petitions that are listed, specifically the ones that are for allowing non-citizens and sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to vote, allowing ranked choice voting in Northampton, and particularly banning brokers' fees from renters in Northampton. Back in twenty nineteen, there was a report published that was speaking to ways to make Northampton more affordable. Banning brokers' fees was at the top of their recommendations. In twenty-one, on the Housing Partnership, I helped draft the first version of this bill and have been advocating for it since. There's some urgency with this one. The governor recently said that she was going to propose her own state version of what she called banning brokers' fees. Reading into it, what her rule would do is say that brokers' fees must be paid by whoever is engaging the services of the broker. Unless engaging the services of the broker is radically redefined, that codifies into law what's currently going on in Northampton today, which is the renters paying one hundred percent of all fees to brokers, with landlords being offered free services to get around that. I don't want that to be the case. I want renting to be affordable in Northampton, and I think this is a straightforward way to make this a case. I don't know how to make the state level move any faster on this one, but re-upping it is a good first start. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, Patty.
Hi, my name is Patty. I'm a twenty-one Longfellow in Florence, and I'm speaking in support of the, the order to amend the charter to allow non-resident citizens to vote, and the order to amend the charter to allow residents sixteen years older to vote municipal elections. And first, I'd like to say, my, my daughters were the founding members of the student charter commission. What was it called? The youth charter, the youth, youth commission. And that was over twenty years ago. And though, they were among others who met with the then-mayor, Claire Higgins, to discuss the lack of a union contract for teachers and the unfortunate lack of supports in the schools. And we are twenty years later, so, with the same struggles. But I believe that we should have students who are sixteen years or of age or older be able to vote municipal elections, because they have, they are very politically sophisticated, savvy, educated. They're illustrating, demonstrating their, their knowledge across the Commonwealth, understanding the kinds of economic impacts on their education and their livelihood. But because I don't have a chance, I'm gonna quickly go to the order to allow residents to vote. And it's much the same. We have many families, residents and workers in our community who are participants, who are taxpayers, and who are now under threat of deportation and fracturing their families, and I think would be very supportive and hopeful for our community to be able to support their ability to vote on at least the, the issues that face them in their immediate community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Okay, we'll continue with the folks on Zoom.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hang on a second, Garof. We'll go with, go ahead. Come on up.
Hi, folks. My name is Sharon Deal. Live in Florence. I want to ask you folks to please opt in. This is my twenty-eighth year as a special education teacher, and I can tell you that the post-pandemic students are radically different from the students I used to work with. We need your help. We need your support. I also, I just wrote this tonight, I also heard somebody say, you know, about the sidewalks. Thank you for all the sidewalk money. We need the sidewalk money. I used to be a well-bodied person and incredibly light on my feet. I had a terrible in-network doctor through Health New England who refused to, and Health New England refused to let me go to a bone salvage specialist in Boston. And at the five-month marker, that doctor told me that he had never performed a surgery on a necrotic bone due to cancer. I am now disabled. I have acute blood clots. I have a handicap parking placard. I drove around tonight trying to find a spot, could not find a friggin' spot. Finally found one, walked a ways away. It's getting dark out. I'm sure I'm gonna have to have my camera on, I mean, my light on when I head out, because I'm gonna probably have a chance of falling. I've fallen four times over the last probably six to eight months. So that, that person who said, you know, the sidewalks are fine, they're not fine, I have to tell you. I, what I ask you to do is get some crutches or sit in a wheelchair, and then try to go about your day. Just try. Try to do it, and then see how life is so radically different. And when you cancel school or when you do a delay, please, please shovel the sidewalks, because that doesn't always happen. I did slip one time this year, when a delay was not given. There was about two inches of snow. I waited in my car until I had to get in the building, and it was not shoveled or plowed or anything, and I did slip. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, Garof.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Garaj Jishnani, Ward Six. Hi, councilors and mayor. You might remember me from previous meetings, or maybe from yesterday's Boston Globe. Our city is all over the news as a place where ableism, inequity, and hypocrisy run rampant. People across our state can't believe what's happening here at so many levels. Last year, we already made cuts to education that only normally happen in places swimming in debt. Last year, you were told we were facing a deficit, and this was why you had to gut the schools. Then, eleven-point-six-seven million dollars magically appeared. This year, at the recent school committee meeting, the mayor told us the current moment is, quote, "recessionary," and so we need to destroy the school budget completely, cutting over twenty unnamed staff from a system that is already broken. You, the council, and we, the public, have no reason to believe her. I know that several of you have already come out in support of her reelection campaign, but at some point, you have to face reality. Mayor Shiara does not have our children's interests or our city's interests in mind. That should be crystal clear from the preferred budget that she has advanced. Our children are suffering. We have been advancing a racist, ableist, anti-Port agenda in service of non-urgent capital improvements and a fantasy of an even more exclusionary housing market. Please find the courage to opt in. We don't need a unitary executive system. Support the strong school budget. Don't sell our city and our children for a lie. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the room like to speak? Okay, just raise your hand in the future in between Zoom, if you would. We'll go next to Lisa Modenos.
Thank you, Lisa Modenos, Florence. This Saturday starts the Week of the Young Child in Northampton, and I want to read something from last year's statement on the Week of the Young Child. Whereas the first year of a child's life are the most rapid brain development period and laid a foundation for all future learning, and whereas children's cognitive, physical, social, emotional language development are built on each child's positive interactions with adults, peers, and their environment, and whereas high-quality early care and education help build strong developmental foundations for young children, leading to positive outcomes for individual children. I'm gonna jump ahead. I, Mayor Gina Louis-Shiara, encourage all members of the Northampton community to join me in supporting efforts that increase children and families' access to high-quality early childhood education, in recognizing the complex, valuable, essential, and demanding work of early childhood educators, and in celebrating the Week of the Young Child. That was a statement from the mayor in twenty-twenty-four's Week of the Young Child. I hope this year's statement will shift from a four-percent increase budget to a strong budget to support access to high-quality early education, early childhood education. And I hope that the council will opt in, have the courage, like Garof said, to opt in, and support the strong budget as well. Our children deserve it. Our educators deserve it. And if we're going to celebrate the Week of the Young Child, let's do it by supporting the one public institution that covers all of their needs, and that's public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Tammy Le Chance. Can you hear us, Tammy? You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. And we will come back to you. Then we'll go next to Maritha Wallace.
Hello, my name is Maritha Wallace, and I currently live in San Juan, Massachusetts, and I am employed at JFK Middle School. And I would like to concede my time to Andrea Agito, so she can finish her statement. Thank you.
That isn't allowed, but you're welcome to read any statement yourself. Andrea could send it to you.
Go ahead, come back to me, Andrea. If you can hand me, go ahead and send it to me, and I'll read it.
How much time does she have left?
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's, um, two, I'm sorry, I just, um, one minute and forty-five.
Okay. Next, well, we'll circle back to Tammy. Tammy Le Chance, are you able to try again?
Excuse me. One.
Okay, yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Great. I'm getting a terrible echo, though.
It may be your volume.
Okay, I'm gonna see if I still have that echo. Oh, the echo's gone. Great. I am so sorry about that.
No worries. No worries.
I'm gonna complicate things even further in that I have a class with Tammy Lachance, but I'm not Tammy Lachance.
Okay.
It's just off my screen, and I don't know how to change it. My name is Sarah Churchill Windsor. I live in South Deerfield, and I have served students as a special education teacher in the past and currently as a special education coordinator at JFK Middle School since two thousand and eight. I have also been a NACE officer since two thousand and eleven, serving as the PR and R chair formerly known as grievance chair. The North Hampton City Council needs to opt in to ensure greater local control, accountability, checks and balances, and flexibility in allocating resources. By having a direct role in budget decisions, the council can ensure that funding aligns with the city's specific educational priorities, such as improvements to special education services, maintaining school facilities and supporting extracurricular programs. This will allow council members to advocate for what their constituents need. This oversight would also increase transparency, allowing for public input and ensuring that taxpayer dollars are used effectively. Additionally, having the ability to adjust the budget would help the city respond to financial challenges such as changes in state and federal funding without jeopardizing essential programs or staffing. As elected representatives of the community, the city council members are in a strong position to advocate for equitable resource distribution, ensuring that all students receive the support that they need. By opting in, North Hampton would have responsive and accountable systems for managing its school budget, ultimately benefiting students, educators and the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Maritha. Welcome back.
Okay, okay. I'm finishing off Andrea's statement, Andrea Agito. A health and safety grievance filed on behalf of Bridge Street staff that was acknowledged by the school committee where they forced the superintendent to request forty thousand dollars for two additional paras. That was below the bare minimum, but like any time you give someone that is starving a few crumbs, they are grateful. Tonight, please do, don't heat your hands in the, heads in the sand and choose our students. I would just like to encourage you strongly to opt in along with the NACE president. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Deborah.
Good morning. Deborah Porcivitz, Fifty-Nine Phillips Place. O'Connell sat patients for the five-story, it's fifty-four unit apartment building on a hundred and seventy-five-year-old, bickly, single-family home, single block is dishonest. Only a handful of the butters on our single block, on our, on our single block, where the whole street is one block, were notified, notified at the meeting. There's nothing appropriate or responsive to the neighborhood in scale or design. To each of you, picture the five-story hotel in North Hampton, plopped in the middle of the block where you live. Go tomorrow and look at the scale of downtown North Hampton buildings at three stories, almost double the min size on your block. Two minutes is not an opportunity for a meaningful public input, especially when time and again, projects which have a massive impact on local residents are not made public until after the fact. We had no opportunistic, meaningful impact before either. I would like to see a show of hands of how many city councilors were aware of the specific rezoning of the residential lot on Phillips Place to facilitate this project when you approved the zoning changes. How many of you are aware of the conversations beginning in twenty twenty-two between the planning office in O'Connell when, when O'Connell essentially blackmailed the city into inappropriately giving five hundred thousand dollars of CPA money to the church? This is the exact strategy that occurred with Bay City State Village Private Line Communications between the planning office and developers with no such communications with taxpaying residents. I'm gonna try and get these quickly. You should be, you're elected by citizens and you should be responsive to us. You should not, not be in favor of the intentional obscuring of zoning changes. There's an inappropriate conflict of interest with one office with an inordinate amount of power that oversees development, sustainability and historic preservation. Phillips Place already struggles with lack of parking, eighteen-wheelers avoiding a bridge and flooding. There's no plan in this planning process to address any of these. No plan to address a massive deficit of parking, twenty-four spaces for fifty-four units in addition to the loss of fifty thousand places on Main Street. This kind of planning needs to happen before a project is approved. Our city planning director has to explain in advance how, how parking is gonna be accommodated, how eighteen-wheelers are gonna be.
That was time, if you could finish your sentence.
And how flooding is gonna be accommodated, and the city councilor should be holding her accountable to this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is GL Nabad.
Hello, thank you. My name is Gwen, and I live in Ward One in North Hampton. I'm here tonight to ask that we can renew the, the fee, the fee, the landlord fees, the, the real estate fee, if we can get that redone again. And I know that the governor is supportive of this, to ban these fees. However, yes, so I'm here to support that. And also, I'm also here to ask the council to vote in the best way possible to support students and young people that are growing up in, in North Hampton and also to try to find a way to make this budget work so that we can have a great little city with, that's really bustling and has jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Colin.
Hi.
Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, my name is Colin Huffmeister in North Hampton, Mass. and Twenty-Five Phillips Place. I joined dozens of my neighbors tonight and another night in opposition to the fifty-four year apartment complex that is being proposed. Now, I am not against development. The original plan presented to us was very reasonable, and while the neighborhood has dealt with a lot of construction for approximately five years now, nobody opposed the condominiums that were to be developed or opposed the condos that we developed where they've now kind of got a date and switch. The lot was upzoned in two thousand and twenty-two to accommodate this apartment complex. Without that upzoning, it would have to be the six condominiums that we are all in agreement on. The upzoning really was just presented to us a couple of weeks ago, that they're gonna do this, this large apartment building. A lot of things have been covered. I only have two minutes. The city and the developers had years and months to plan this, but I'm gonna give you some visuals. So this is what has been presented to be built. My property is, wow, this is tricky to do on Zoom. My property is way up here, this little thing here. So I'm a direct-to-butter. The renditions they did, do not give you proper scale. I don't know who went in my backyard. Somebody went into my backyard apparently, and this would be my house here. But it's kind of like the selfie. If you're the first one in the selfie photo, your head looks bigger than anybody else's smaller. My roof line is not nearly as tall as that. I drew this for you. This gives you a better idea. Can you see this okay? I know the light is here. There's all kinds of things going on. This is a fifty-foot, two-scale building next to what my house is, which is about twenty-six feet. It's proposed to be fifty feet tall, very wide, wider than my lot. The other aspect is that.
That was time, if you could just finish your sentence.
It's gonna be destructive to the property and the neighborhood and to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Claudia.
Hi, Claudia Lefkow, Forty Valley Street. We've been listening to all the comments tonight on the city, you know, the, the meeting. And I just want to point out how many comments have to do with Ward Three. Bridge Street School, sidewalks, development, the city and particularly the planning office has us in a crosshairs. We are under attack. I call it a tyranny from the development office, development and sustainability. I want to say that I'm against the development on, on, next to the church there, and I want the councilors to understand the desperation. I've lived at Forty Valley Street for forty-five years, and we've tried to work on sidewalks all that time. Nothing has ever happened with sidewalks in my neighborhood. And when we have tried on our own to organize ourselves, the planning department has worked against us. Twice in the last two years, we tried to get our own grants that we would begin working on this. Twice Carolyn Mish and the city, whoever was, I think, the mayor and Carolyn Mish, needed to sign off on those grants, and they refused redirecting that money. So we are desperate. This man who spoke in the beginning, who was speaking so fast that he could get it done in two minutes, he's desperate. Our city councillor, Quaverly Rothenberg, she's desperate. And that phone call that you heard that night about the ICE was desperation. I feel like this, I particularly appealed to the at-large city councilors the last time, and I heard from nobody about the fact that we have been losing grants to our neighborhood to improve sidewalks. So I'm just begging you all, help Quaverly, please, and the large councilors, we need you. Ward Three is a disaster area. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Luke.
Hi, I'm Luke Caratello. I'm come to become a part of USA in Western Massachusetts, and I live in Ward Five. I'm seeking briefly tonight to urge you to opt in. Our public schools are under attack by the Trump administration. We saw over a hundred million dollars in federal funds cut from schools across our state just the other day. We're seeing public services cut at the state level as well, particularly as our classified legislature struggles to change precedent with Chapter Seventy allocations, and mental health services are slashed in the name of Governor Healey's tax cuts for our state's wealthiest residents. Here in North Hampton, a city with every potential to live up to its progressive reputation, we cannot afford municipal administration that joins in on the attacks on public services. Our schools are unable to fulfill IAP's legal obligations while the rug is impulso from under the Department of Education. If some destruction of the DOE serves the legal needs of our city government, then what does that say about the interests our incumbent, our incumbent government is serving in our community? We further cannot afford to predicate sections of our economy of war while American weapons are being trained on sovereign peoples all over the world. I appreciate the point made by speaker earlier tonight about donations from Alfred Harris to Republicans, and would emphasize that our municipal administration is signing off on that, too. If we are to take seriously the task of opposing Trump and the fascist agenda movement, it has to start with a program of peace and robust public services that can start tonight with opting in and will be taking it with us into local elections in September and November. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else, sorry, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you all very much. How's everyone doing? Do we need a recess?
Yes, brief recess, please.
Okay, eight minutes. We'll come back at seven fifty-one. Welcome back to the Northampton City Council. Next on our agenda is announcements from councillors and the mayor. Councillor Dubs.
Thank you. I would like to make a statement of solidarity with a member of the public who made a comment today, Olivia Marshall. Olivia is a very good friend of mine. A few years ago, her and I organized a rally together in Northampton where we spoke up for the rights of disabled people. Olivia is an amazing person and I think that she deserves better. I think that the sidewalks in the city, you know, I know that we have been talking about it and we have given a million dollars this year to go towards sidewalks, but we aren't doing enough. And what I'm asking everyone today, I'm making a plea to the council today, please start listening. And I know that, you know, as a councillor, as the only visibly disabled councillor, it might be easy for you to hear what I say sometimes when you hear me talking about sidewalks, that it's just a Jeremy issue. It's just, it's this issue that Jeremy's got with sidewalks and he won't shut up about it. And, you know, I just want you all to please keep in mind that I'm speaking for the disabled people in Northampton when I speak about sidewalks. I'm speaking for people like Olivia Marshall. The reason we organized a rally three years ago was to prevent injuries, to prevent things like what happened to her today, when she fell out of her wheelchair. I fell out of my wheelchair too on the sidewalk, you know, and I just wish that people knew how frightening that is, how horrifying that is to know that just leaving your house to go to the store or, you know, somewhere to visit your friend, that you might actually fall out of your wheelchair and injure yourself trying to do that. And it makes you want to stay inside. It makes you want to not go places. It makes you unemployed because you can't get to your job. And this is a serious issue. And yes, disabled people are a minority. We are a minority. And often it feels like we are treated that way. We're treated like a minority because there are, you know, it seems like to other people in this government, there are a lot of other things to think about besides sidewalks. I know, I understand, there's lots of things to think about. But we need to do more to focus on the sidewalks because this is an issue that's going to affect all of us at some point in our lives. If you decide, if you decide that you want to stay in Northampton, you're going to be an older person eventually and you're going to wish that the sidewalks were nicer and more safe and less dangerous. I'd also like to ask, I'd like to put it back at another comment that was made during public comments, and someone that tried to explain to Olivia to remind her that we're giving a lot of money towards sidewalks this year. That's no way to talk to a disabled person. I would like people to speak to disabled people with empathy, compassion, and understanding for the situation that they find themselves in. Many people decide, you know, many people who are disabled have to wonder if we should even live here in Northampton. Should we move somewhere else where it's more accessible? And I'd also remind people that this is the law. APA is the law, at least right now. And it's in danger right now, that's for sure, with our national government. So let's do what we can. I'd like us all to step it up, pun intended. Real quick, you know, when, when our society is structured in a way that benefits able-bodied people more than disabled people and disability issues get brushed aside like an afterthought, there's a word for that. There's a phrase for that. It's called societal ableism. And we're all guilty of it. We all live in an ableist society. And we need to do what we can in our power here in government to push back on that, to shut down ableism. I have a word for it that I made up. It's called disabilism. And disabilism is the opposite of ableism. It's the shutting down of societal ableism in real time as we see it. When we see ableism, we shut it down. We fix it. We make solutions. We work on it together. We collaborate. Olivia and I, we organized a rally called the Disabled Movement. That's what we called it. And that movement is still continuing because these problems haven't gone away. In fact, they've gotten worse. And we need people to start listening to us. I'm asking all of my able-bodied councillors and the mayor and the chief of staff, Alan Wolf, to listen to disabled people. And, you know, let's, let's, let's talk to Olivia. Let's ask her where she was injured. Let's investigate it. What spot did you get injured in? Let's fix it immediately. That's how we should be talking to disabled people. And not just explaining, oh, well, we are giving more money this year than we ever have towards sidewalks. That's not going to help Olivia in this moment because that sidewalk was not fixed yet for her. And I'm not going anywhere until the sidewalks are fixed in this town. I moved here when I was in my twenties. Now I'm in my late forties. And the sidewalks are still bad. And we'll see how old I am when it's, when it's better. But I'm asking you all to help me, help Olivia. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements. Councillor Levarage, is your microphone on?
Thank you. I just want to echo Councillor Dubs. Being disabled myself, being completely deaf in my right ear, it's a problem. It's a problem. I had residents who were out here when we could not hear anything, anything. They only could hear was just a little bit from our council president. And I do have a cousin, first cousin in Hoyok, who's completely disabled like you. And one of the teachers in Northampton spent a lot of time with my cousin, teacher, and go take care of him because of knowing the family. And I'm with you. Sidewalks are important for everybody, for everybody, people in wheelchairs, crutches, right down the line. And that's what I've been dealing with on Florence Road for many, many years, eighteen years, fighting to have that sidewalk down because I have people who are partially blind, I have people on crutches and wheelchairs. I'm with you. I believe in that. So, but anyway, secondly, I want to read something very important. City of Northampton celebrates Earth Day and Arbor Day with tree plantings, tree whip giveaway, and a setback tree program. In celebration of Earth Day, the City of Northampton, along with the Department of Public Works, Northampton Public Schools, the Northampton Urban Forestry Commission, volunteers from Tree Northampton, and the Northampton Rotary Club, which I belonged to for many years, will be planting twenty-eight trees at John F. Kennedy Middle School in Florence. The event will take place on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, starting at 8:30 a.m. And Mayor, you can finish off about City Hall in front of it and the trees and so forth. Thank you.
Mayor Sarah.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to finish off. You didn't give me a heads up. What day are the whips are available?
But if you want it.
That would be great. Yes, so you can come get, pick up tree whips. And so they, we will provide seven hundred free tree whips for residents to plant on their property. And that is on Friday, April 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in front of City Hall. It's always a really amazing event. They do a great job of coming up with seven tree species, so they come up with sort of a wide selection of different sort of looks of trees, but ones that are all hardy and should live for many, many years and are disease resistant. So please come join us for that and for celebrating Arbor Day. And come, feel free to come to the event that Councillor Levarage was talking about to plant as well on that Saturday, April 12th. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll take that.
Thank you.
Because I've been getting calls on it. Thank you.
Before we go forward, I see Councillor Perry. I just want to remind folks, the announcement period is, there aren't limits presently on what the scope of the announcement is. So it is whatever, as long as it is an announcement. But we, we can't debate what someone says because unless it is something that's posted on the agenda. So we can't have a back and forth or, and then I would say it's better not to refer to, in terms of your opinion about something that might come before us. But just simply state your thoughts on whatever the announcement is. Councillor Perry.
All right. Sorry, I can't be there continually in person. And I won't go into the statements, but I do just want to share my appreciation for Councillor Dubs, just his passion and the statements that you said. I understand it and I'm thankful for your passion. So just have that stated. And for announcements, I am back again with a couple of things. For our community, I mentioned this last time, but the Fourth Annual Power of Truths conference is happening in BOMBICS. Day one, which is Friday, the fourth, is going to be mostly workshops and screenings. And the Northampton High School Jasmine is performing. So that's kind of the focus of that. And then day two is kind of more robust. There's the keynote speaker. There's going to be hip hop performances. There's a Noble Ledge Hip Hop History Live event. You guys can go over to BOMBICS or the Arts Council website and there's a whole schedule of things that are happening. I participated last year and it was phenomenal. And sort of, again, in that vein, oh, sorry, that's my alarm telling me I need to, I don't know what to do. On April 18th and 19th, at Thirty-three Holly, there is the Rise Festival. It's resilience and self-expression. I don't know if anyone already talked about this, but it is a festival honoring youth art and literature. There's going to be presentations, signings, performances, workshops, the vendor room with the youth makers market and more things like that. I will talk more about that at our next City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements. Councillor Rothenberg.
Yes, I wanted to hold space for the residents of Ward Three. I've had so many meetings with you this month and you guys are working so hard on so many different things. There are so many of you who are working for funding for the schools, of course, but there are also many of you who've been working for the sidewalks, many of you who are concerned about the development and concerned about trucks coming through your neighborhood, Coca-Cola trucks getting rerouted. There's a new truck eating bridge. We now have two in Ward Three. And you do all that you can to get these issues addressed and you call everyone that you can. And your city councillor is one stop along the way. And when I tell you, well, if I bring something to City Council, I'm not sure that council will address it. Maybe you as an individual or maybe you with your neighbors can go to this person and this person and this person and this group and that group. And maybe you find more allies and maybe you find someone on a smaller subcommittee who would put something on their agenda. You know, this is the kind of work that I have to help the residents of Ward Three do. But it is troubling. It's troubling to us in Ward Three. We do feel very much like we are on the wrong side of the tracks and we have been for a long time. And if you look back at the oral history of Ward Three, you see a lot of poverty there. No question. When, when the time was that to be someone was to have a white picket fence and a fur coat and a black car, you wouldn't find a lot of that in Ward Three. You might find a single mom who worked in a factory. So when we have a school like Bridge Street School that has so many kids of color and it has greater needs and less funding or even equal funding, that can look like racism. When you have a ward that is traditionally impoverished and it doesn't get roads as smooth as others, that can look like classism. And when you have people falling on sidewalks, despite organizing so many groups and for so many years to get their sidewalks fixed, that can look like ableism. And Olivia is one of my constituents and she is the immediate past president of the Ward Three Neighborhood Association. She couldn't be working any harder to try to get her issues addressed. And I say the same for so many of my constituents. Ward Three is remarkably engaged in their constituency compared to other wards. So I just want to say that I have a list of questions that I'll be sending to the mayor about the sidewalks in Ward Three. I want to know when we will see the list of sidewalks and streets that are slated to be addressed in Ward Three. I want to know whether they've been funded yet and scheduled yet. I want to know what their priority ranking is. And I would like to know what the to-do list is for the whole city. We have many different lists floating around that have different kinds of priorities. We have buckets of funding, but I really want to know with specificity, what kind of progress can we see in Ward Three because the constituents really deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mayory.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we're having some issues with kind of garbled sound on cable. So if you, if you can hear this and you're watching this on cable, you could try YouTube live streaming and they are working on the sound.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the consent agenda and then ask if there are any removals for discussion. The March 6th, 2025 minutes, the approval of 24.213 National Grid/Verizon Poll Petition for Park Hill Road. 25.225, in order to establish water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2026, second reading. 25.227, in order to authorize use of $97,176 fiscal year 2026 capital appropriation for lease instead of purchase of Department of Health and Human Services vehicles, in second reading. 25.228, in order to appropriate $244,883 free cash to the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund, in second reading. 25.229, in order to increase credit available through the Senior Tax Workoff Program, second reading. 25.230, in order to increase credit available through Veterans Tax Workoff Program, second reading. 25.237, applications for renewal of secondhand dealer licenses, renewals for Electric Eye Records, Roz's Place, Cancer Connection Thrift Shop, The Family Jewels, and Sassy Pants Vintage and Used Clothing. That's the consent agenda. Are there any? The Family Jewels, and Sassy Pants Vintage and Used Clothing. That's the consent agenda. Are there any removals?
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg.
The water and sewer and the $244,000 free cash transfer.
Any other removals? Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those items.
The consent agenda.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Moulton, seconded by Counselor Elkins. There's no discussion on the consent agenda, so roll call, please, on approval.
Counselor Dobbs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkin.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. First removal is 25.225, in order to establish water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2026. This was introduced at our previous March 20th meeting and was referred to the consent agenda. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, thank you. Well, I understand the explanations that Donna gave us about what happened with the over $2 million that came in from Coca-Cola that wasn't expected and wasn't depended upon. And I understand that the rates were set to replace Coca-Cola, should it have been at zero. And I understand that the over $2 million was put towards capital projects that are likely very important and needed. My constituents were ultimately not satisfied with this process. They were not satisfied that there was not sort of public consultation about what would happen if there were Coca-Cola overages. And this just sort of ties into the general theme of Ward Three wanting to have more public input, more public participation, not just on paper in the sense that we followed the spirit of things and had a hearing or that we have, you know, boards that have committees. The members of Ward Three really want more robust communication with the public and participation of the public and knowingness of the public before large financial decisions are made. And so this will be a no for Ward Three just because really of the process. Thank you.
Counselors, any other discussion? Okay.
To approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Perry and seconded by Counselor Elkins. Roll call, please, on approval of the water sewer rates.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg.
No.
And Counselor Dobbs.
Yes.
So that passes eight to one. Next is 25.228, in order to appropriate $244,883 in free cash to the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. We discussed this at the March 20th meeting and it was referred to the consent agenda. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, I was just hoping that you could repeat sort of a high-level view of this transfer. I wasn't at the last meeting.
Sure, I wasn't at the last meeting either, so, but I wonder if the mayor would like to first speak to it? And then I can also speak to it, but it was introduced by you.
Sure, yes, we covered this at the last meeting. So as requested by the council, we are rolling in the $50,000 to the base of the Northampton Public Schools budget from the additional one-time appropriation of the $294,883 and 3 cents that the council voted on last month in March. And so that came from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. As we discussed in that meeting, since the $50,000 is for recurring operating expenses and will become somewhere around $200,000 or more, which will be built into the budget. So as we discussed, we're requesting essentially switch the remaining $244,883, which the council voted on as one-time funds, to use the undesignated fund balance instead of the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund because it'll be one-time funds.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labard and seconded by Counselor Moulton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, on approval.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Epstein.
Counselor Dobbs.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, that passes with eight yes votes and one abstention. Come to financial orders on first reading, 25.239, in order to appropriate $40,000 free cash to economic development projects and initiatives. This is coming from the mayor's office. And do you like us to read it? There's quite a bit of background here.
I have a little presentation.
Sure, great.
Okay. I mean, I can read it also, but maybe the presentation.
If your presentation covers what's in here, then that works for me. But if anyone else wants us to read it, we can.
Sure.
Welcome, Chief of Staff Wolf.
And thank you very much, counselors. I'm excited just to talk about this with you. So as many of you know, we have done a lot of bootstraps activities since the pandemic to try and support our efforts downtown. And so this is the latest in what I would characterize as a long string of relatively modest investments for high returns for downtown activities that I will demonstrate have paid off for the City of Northampton and for contributing to the general fund. So Charlene, if you want. So the orders for $40,000, you may remember that last year about this time, I came for a $65,000 order, which you very graciously supported. And I think we put to good use. And I'm going to talk about what we did with all that. There's a little leftover in it. But there have been some changes to some things that necessitate re-nourishing that to continue the kinds of things that we've been doing downtown, to try and bring people back out to our downtown. So first, I just want to set the stage. I think a lot of us today have watched the news with some trepidation. I think it's fair to say that our local economy is suffering from a little bit of federal uncertainty with funding cuts, department cuts, and job cuts at the federal level, which we heard in Boston have also happened. Consumer confidence is dropping like a rock. The expectation index is the lowest it's been in 12 years and well below the threshold that they use and measurable, which is 80, which usually signals a recession on the way. The tariffs, the implementation of broad-based tariffs effective yesterday, is expected to significantly impact economic activity, increasing costs for local businesses and consumers. As of 4:30 today, when I finally hit save on this presentation, the Dow was down 1,679 points. The S&amp;P was down 4.85%, and the NASDAQ was down 6%, which is as low as it's been since the start of the pandemic. Inflation, combined with volatile business conditions, cumulative inflation in the Boston area, which is the best we can do for New England is the Boston area, is exceeding 20% since 2020. It's around 22%, I think, which is pretty significant for households to face a 22% increase. And we've certainly heard a lot of scary stories in the mayor's office about electric and heating costs this winter and how incredibly high they have been. So we are also certainly in the City of Northampton continuing to experience pandemic after effects. We still have two of our most important music venues empty and shuttered in the Calvin and Pearl Street. Consumer behavior patterns have absolutely changed. If you have gone downtown to try and get a drink after 10 o'clock or an appetizer, most of the restaurants are closed because people are just not going out and staying out much past 9:00 p.m. anymore. The online shopping pressure on retail continues to happen in a process that started affecting Main Street USA with malls and then to big box stores and then now online shopping. The downtown retailers are really swimming upstream, trying to compete and offer things that people can only get in our city. And then in addition, I think the reduced alcohol consumption patterns that have come since the pandemic. People are not buying the big bottle of wine out at restaurants anymore. And I think these things are really pressuring our economy, making it all the more important that we continue to do as much as we can to invest in the town. So here is sort of some good news. And you can see, this is the history of local receipts revenue, which we talk about all the time as very important to, a very important piece of Northampton's general fund revenue. And here is the history and you can watch, certainly it really shows in FY '21 just how seriously the pandemic hit. And then through a lot of, I would argue, wise decisions that this group and the mayor's office and the city made investments in downtown and honestly, for our community coming together to work hard to recover from that, it steadily comes back to where even in the face of that inflation today, and it's absolutely, I think, slowed by that, we are, we've come back with a modest increase of 7.15% in the first two quarters. I'm a little nervous because the third quarter is the winter and it was a cold winter. I hope this holds, but it was, we had a lot of anecdotal information that it was a tough winter for a lot of businesses downtown. But even holding at a positive from 24, 4.32%, I think is a testament to the kinds of things we did to intervene and make the economy better. So this 40% that this order is asking for represents just 0.04% of the city's current general fund budget. Local receipts generated were 5.5 million and 24, and even 10% of that, 550,000, if you were to credit this $40,000 for helping generate, would be a 1,283% return. So, and the revenues of the general fund, we have been talking about all the things that they fund tonight. So this is a critical piece of ensuring that we have money available to have conversations about how we're going to spend it. So, next one, Charlene. Last year's investment of that $65,000 went a long, long way. So the kinds of things we spent it on were to support outdoor dining, which is to send Donna's team out and put up all those barriers, put out all the planters, fill them with dirt. It funded the Massachusetts Vacant Storefront Program to the tune of $30,000, which is the program you know is, the state will give a $10,000 tax credit or actual cash payment to a business that occupies this vacant storefront currently that has been empty for more than a year. And then the city matches that. So the business gets $20,000. And three businesses have taken advantage of this program since we signed up. Many Grace's Farm and Design up on West Street, Assemble on the corner of Old South and Main, and Toasted on Pleasant Street in the old Sylvester's building. We also invested heavily in downtown music because, again, the idea to get people to come and do something downtown, to watch something in person, to get on the street, to hopefully walk into the restaurants, bars, and shops. So that money for Summer on Strong, Bands on Brewster, Salsa in the Plaza, Salsa in the Park, the Florence Summer Concert Series, The Taste of Northampton, which was brought back through an additional grant, but continues to be supported by this money. And also Back Porch Festival, which was really successful last month and is almost like four nights of, first night. So again, small investments in important events. And then also in-kind support for events like The Taste of Northampton, Sidewalk Sales, the Holiday Stroll, and Ice Art. Let me just go, I guess, back one. And so I just want, in addition to this money, I just wanted to sort of give a little history of other interventions financially the city has done that your body and the mayors have put out there to try and really support our two downtowns. In the mayor's ARPA community investment grants, that $4 million that was set aside from ARPA money that came from the federal government to help recover from the pandemic, there was $477,468 in grants for arts and culture and tourism. And I sort of picked out the ones most relevant to the downtowns. There was $53,000 to the Academy Music, $72,000, 72.9 to the Iron Horse to help them get back open, $80,000 to the Coming Forbes Outdoor Library Amphitheater Stage, and $79,002 for Bombix. So those being sort of music and getting people out examples. And then also an additional $391,000 in grants for small business recovery. $125,000 of that went to the DNA for operation and events. And those events were for things like The Taste, the Holiday Stroll, Ice Art, Sidewalk Sales. And then an additional $75,000 to a joint effort by the Valley CDC and the DNA to give out individual business grants. And I think all told, I want to say there were eight of them, mayors, seven, eight, for new businesses that just got a grant for having recently opened and support. And I know for at least one of them, it helped them make it through the winter, that grant. So, and then we also, you may remember, talking about rapid recovery, which was height of the pandemic stuff. We had, we got some money from the state for a consultant to come and make a list of things that we should do to make Northampton more viable. And if you go back to that list and look at it, we have done an incredible number of them, including lighting the bridge to try and connect up Lower Main Street and the area known now as Paradise East in Ward Three. It paid for planters, it paid for, we implemented the parking system improvements that was recommended by that and other studies. The garage count signs came out of that, wayfinding, downtown storage units came out of those recommendations. The murals, the raccoons, and then the one behind the children's books. And those are all, were all recommendations from that. So we have been doing everything we can think of with any money we can find to try and support downtown. So lastly, I'll just give you a little update on the change to the Massachusetts Vacant Storefront Program, which is pretty exciting. Northampton was a little less than half of the utilization of this program, meaning not a lot of other municipalities in the state took advantage of it. And so they went back to the drawing board to say, how can we get more municipalities to sign up for this, what we think is a cool program? So they decided to add it to the One Stop for Growth Program, which is one place where all municipalities can go for multiple buckets of money. So this is now part of that. And what they did is, when they moved it over, they changed it to be six months only, not a year, to be eligible for the program, which makes a whole bunch more of Northampton's vacant storefront properties eligible now to apply for this program. The other thing they did is we have to apply for it as part of the One Stop, but we can now apply for up to $50,000 that we can apportion however we want and we can match with however we want. So it used to be 10 and 10, so now we could, if there were one giant business that was going to fill, we could give all 50 and match it with $1,000, if that's what we chose to do as a city. But more likely, we could give out five of them and match them at 5,000 with this grant, which is sort of what I was thinking in terms of when we were thinking about the ask, how we calculated this $40,000. And other communities are no longer required to establish a vacant storefront district. We have one, we established it. It's now really easy to change it. If we, like, when we signed up for it, we sort of had to really carefully make sure that we met a bunch of criteria and now they're just not as worried about it. There's more inclusivity in what qualifies now. And that, I think, is really all I wanted to share on this. But I just, I really feel like this is not a difficult investment. Our downtown desperately needs the support. We're not heading into a great time, no matter what. And we want to keep doing all of these wonderful things that I listed. All of those things are slated to happen again. The Bands on Brewster will be rocking. As will Summer on Strong, we've met with them. The outdoor dining will go out sometime this month soon. And so we want to keep downtown vibrant. And so this is hopefully enough to help the city do its part to support all the great people who have great ideas downtown. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? The mayor's office. Counselor Moulton.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Wolf. I think all of these are worthy. I'm particularly interested, though, in the vacant storefront program and the changes that you foresee will mean potentially increasing the number of applicants. And so I, and I think that, I think that you said that about 30,000 of the 65,000 from last year was, went to the...
Absolutely, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, half, basically.
So I guess I would like to encourage us to keep, to make that a, keep enough money available so that if we get, you know, more than five applications, that we can, we can support those. So I guess my question is, how did you decide to go from 65,000 down to the 40,000 requests for this coming here?
Well, just an awareness of the financial situation the city finds itself now. Also the fact that we still have some money in this account from that 65,000 from last year. And originally... And originally, we didn't think the DNA was going to do The Taste this year, but they have decided to do it, and they, Andrew was saying that she's got some great ideas, which I have not heard yet. But it felt like we, we almost could have stretched that 65 to years, but when we learned that The Taste was happening and we learned that the vacant storefront program had changed, we felt like we should come back and make sure that, exactly as you're saying, that we are prepared, without needing to come back to council, to support that program, to everyone who wants to be part of it.
Okay, well, I appreciate the frugality, then.
Thank you. Councilor LeBarge?
Yes, thank you, Alan, for doing that presentation. I think this is a really modest investment here. And knowing what happened with the beginning of the COVID, just like us counselors, we had responsibilities of a budget at that time. And I couldn't support at all the police new vehicles, knowing how many businesses were failing. And that was a hard decision for me to make, but I had to look at my residents being laid off, families, and businesses hurting so bad. And I think it passed like seven to nine, as far as counselors backing me on that. It was the time of what was happening so bad here in our city. So I think this is great, and it's really something I encourage as a business family of this happening.
Thank you, Councilor.
You're welcome.
Any others? Councilor Rothenberg?
I have a few questions. The first is for Director Nardi. When do you expect we will have the third quarter report?
The last meeting, well, this is April, isn't it? Either the last meeting in April or the first meeting in May.
Okay, and then for The Taste of Northampton, Mr. Wolf, would it be possible for you to provide a line item breakdown of the in-kind support?
Yep.
The grants, and also any payments made to the city by the DNA?
I actually have that, if you want me to read it right now.
No, I'd like to have it to review before the next meeting. Thanks. And then my last set of questions is about the ARPA grants. Did the 75 to Valley CDC and the 125 to DNA, was that included in the overall 477? Are those separate?
Those ones were examples from those totals, yes.
So would it also be possible to have a breakdown of when those reimbursements were made?
Sure.
In the 477?
For, across the entire 477?
Yeah, what could you provide?
Well, all of those grants are on the website right now in their amounts, like, if you want that detail.
I'm looking for the reimbursement dates. I'm trying to follow the cash flow of it.
Okay. I have to talk to the grants manager. I think we could probably do that. I mean, it's, it's all...
Great. Before the next meeting, you think, before we vote on this?
I know. Let me, let me talk to her, we'll let you know.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Which grant, for all of, for...
Every grant.
The ARPA grants.
For all 60 of the ARPA grants?
The $477,000 worth.
So just for that section?
The arts and culture and tourism.
We'll look into it and let you know. It shouldn't be hard.
Any other questions, comments? Councilor Perry?
Well, first of all, thank you, Chief of Staff Wolf, for the presentation. Most folks know how I feel about economic development here in our city, as I've worked tirelessly to try and reignite things. So I'm excited to see things have, this money's been put to good use, and I'm excited, oh, man. Hit too much. It was awful, like, anyhow, I'm really excited to see what we can do with this next amount of money if we move it through. But my question is, how are we reaching out to businesses who would like to utilize these funds? Is it a city thing? Is the DNA doing it? I'm just curious. I know you guys are really trying to do all the things at once, but, that's right.
So, a lot of the things are functions of the event that they are, like, we will, we, in fact, just commissioned a check for Summer on Strong to pay for the music at Summer on Strong. So we went to several meetings with that group, and they asked, will you pay for this again? And we said, yes. And so that's one way. Bands on Brewster, similarly, those folks, in those, well, there's like an anchor partner, like, so the brewery is Bands on Brewster, and so, and then Brian Foot is very involved in terms of scheduling the music, setting that up, making sure that the stages are in place, and those things. On the vacant storefront program, you're right, perhaps if we, I assume when we get this grant, that we will issue a release and say, we have it. Please, if this applies to you, come to us. And someone could come right now, and I believe we actually maybe have the leeway to act on the new rules even now. There was, I'm not 100% sure on that, but if someone were to walk in the door, we would try. But anyone who wants to apply and thinks they are eligible to the vacant storefront program should do that to the city. And the rest of the things are sort of known entities that we schedule and do, either through the arts or some business group that's putting it on, like the DNA or the Chamber.
I have a question. I really appreciate the inclusion of Florence in, you know, the downtown summer music series and events, or support of Bombix. Does the vacant storefront program only apply to downtown, or now that we don't have a district?
Think we could.
Would it apply if there was a place in Florence?
The answer is, we would amend. We would try very hard.
Great, thank you.
I think maybe we included a piece, I'm so sorry, I don't know for sure. I don't know if, I can look up on my computer when I sit back down.
Yeah, it, you know, if you could get information before we vote on it in two weeks.
Yep.
And then I'll just say, I also appreciate all the numbers and the grounding in the economic multiplier, both for the city as a whole and its economy, and then also what comes to us as a city.
Thank you.
Anything else? Then entertain a motion either to refer to the consent agenda or to finance.
Yes, to make a motion to refer this to the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Councilor LeBarge and seconded by Councilor Moulton. Further discussion? Okay, a roll call, please, on referral to the consent agenda of our next meeting.
Councilor Clemmer?
Yes.
Councilor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councilor Moulton?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg?
No.
Councilor Dubs?
Yes.
Councilor Elkins?
Yes.
And Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
So that passes. Who skipped somebody?
Oh, me. I think you skipped me.
You, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilor Mayory.
Yes. Now I feel like I have to, like, ham it up. Yes.
Okay, so now that passes eight with eight yes votes and one no. And it will appear on the consent agenda of our next meeting, and if we wish further discussion, then we can remove it and discuss it. That brings us to non-financial orders, 25.238, in order to accept Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987. This is in first reading, and it is sponsored by Councilor Mayory. Would you like to, would you like us to read it? Would you like to speak to it first?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just remind councilors that I brought this forward because we said at last budget season that we would revisit it this budget season, and I felt like, you know, we really need to have this conversation because if we didn't, it was going to get further along in the budget season, and in fact, we're, it's kind of tight timing to do this. So that's why I brought it forward. Yeah, the, you know, the same, kind of, my same thoughts as last, last season. I think this really intense time with budgets and with our schools, I think it's fair that council shares the responsibility and the accountability on this kind of major, these major decisions when we're, we, you know, we see that there's a crisis and we hear that there's a crisis, and I think, I think it takes all of us. I think, I appreciated the comments about collaborating. There's a lot of, you know, stipulations in this. It's not, it's not something that will be abused. I mean, it takes, you know, it takes an order, just remind councilors, an order from, you know, school committee to city council, and in fact, if we vote for this, the mayor still has to, you know, approve it. And then I believe I had a question, so if this was in place and we wanted to utilize this option, it would be, it's a super majority, right? Six, it's a financial, so that's, super majority would take to even use this if it was in place. And so just opting into the option does not, you mean that we have to use it at any budget season? And, you know, if you read up on the opt-in like we did last year, you know, there's a reason the state put this in place, and that there's a reason that communities use it because, you know, school budgets tend to be a major, if not the biggest, I'm sure that the biggest budget item in every, in every budget, municipal budget. And, you know, there's a lot of things to consider, and it's, I think, I don't see why we wouldn't want kind of all hands on deck and all of us taking responsibility and accountability for what's going on with our school budget, so.
Thank you. Councilor LeBarge?
I have a little problem listening.
Oh, was I far? Apologize. I'll try to get better about...
Is your microphone on?
Yeah.
What did you say about the process in general on opting in?
Right, so I just was reminding councilors that when opting in takes, well, if we vote to approve opting in tonight, it would still need to be approved by the mayor.
It still has to be approved.
Yes. And then if it was in place, the option was in place, we would have to get an order from school committee, correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, an order from school, it would take school committee and city council both agreeing on the option to even use it. And then if we vote to use it, we, council can't just do it, even if we have the option. We'd have to get school committee, so, and that's why people are referring to collaboration because they're saying, you know, that would take collaboration and some communication. And then it would take a super majority to even pass. So I don't have fears of any kind of misuse. I think why not have all the tools that we can?
Thank you.
So the order states, or the law states, on the recommendation of the school committee. So I'm not sure if that just means if the school committee votes for an amount that is greater than what the mayor recommends, does that constitute a recommendation, or do they have to do a separate vote that says, we recommend that you do this? So that's something I think we should clarify.
Hmm.
My understanding was the recommendation was their recommended budget. And so if their budget is greater than what the mayor puts in her budget, then it, the recommend, that would be, that would be a recommendation.
Yeah, fair, we should definitely clarify that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Councilor Moulton?
I, I agree, that's the way I read it, but I do think we should clarify it. And it's, it's a question of if the school committee recommends a, as I read it, a higher figure than the mayor submits, then we could, if we, if we choose to use this law, we could use, we could, we could go up to that figure that was submitted by the school committee. But there's another guardrail in here. It's not just the two-thirds vote that is required by the city, required for the city council to actually approve that higher figure. As the law states, it also prohibits an increase from being voted if it would render the total annual budget in excess of the property tax limitations. So there are actually two, two guardrails.
Councilor Clemmer?
Yeah, and then, yeah, I just want to clarify that with the opt-in, the council can only increase the budget up to the vote of the school committee. You can't increase other departments. And also, it's my understanding that it must, the money must come from other departments, not from free cash. So if the, if we're looking for, to increase the school budget, say a million dollars more, that money would need to come from somewhere. You couldn't just add it from free cash or another fund. It would have to be taken from another department, the way I understand it.
No, that's not the understanding that we, we weren't, this was part of the reason why I think it felt so rushed last year, is we received an opinion through Solicitor Seawald and consultation with the Division of Local Services that, about two days before our final vote, that we could pull from reserve funds. And that was, that was one of the unusual, the reasons that there was, I think, a lot of trepidation. Now, if, I'm seeing, I mean, this is Solicitor Seawald being very surprised, I recall last year, that this was a possibility. If we need another opinion from DLS and from Solicitor Seawald, we could certainly get that.
So I spoke with Attorney Seawald before this meeting, and we are in agreement that, no, you cannot take money from reserves without an order from the mayor or without an agreement from the mayor. It cannot exceed Proposition 2 and 1/2, and when we make the budget, it is already planned to tax to the levy limit, which means you have to take the funds from some other department in order to balance the budget, unless the mayor agrees to bring forth another order.
Sounds like there is a different opinion now from Solicitor Seawald than we received in our meeting of last May. So, and that had to do with after Solicitor Seawald talked with the Division of Local Services. So it sounds like we need to talk to Solicitor Seawald and then talk to the Division of Local Services again and clarify this. Because, yeah, that was one of my big concerns, was that, was...
I think it's critical. Otherwise, we're talking about chaos in the budget. We can, if we, if we, if we can only move money from other departments, if, and the only, the only budget that we could increase is the school budget. That does not apply to any other department.
Sorry, just to clarify, you think it's critical to understand?
It's critical that we get that, that we get this opinion, perhaps we need to go to DLS for its opinion, but, yes, we've got to clarify.
Yep, we'll go, go to Councilor Elkins, and then, well, I want to make sure everyone gets to speak first. Councilor Elkins?
I'm thinking back to last year, and my recollection is, is that DLS and Attorney Seawald said it was more of an open question, not, not that it was, that there was an argument that you could take from reserves, that that's kind of where he left it last year. I mean, my reading of it is that the limit of the Prop 2 and 1/2, of only being able to use up to the Prop 2 and 1/2 levy would mean reserves, because they're in excess of the levy, they're, they're there from previous years. That it's the levy that caps, caps us. I mean, that, that was my reading of it at the time, and I remember having a discussion. And I, I wouldn't swear to it, but I thought it was more of a, it's an open question, which I know you don't hate it when the lawyers say that, but that's, that's where I remember it being.
Would anyone who hasn't spoken like to speak to this? Okay, we'll go back to Councilor Mayory, I think you had...
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, I met, I met personally with the Division of Local Services last year, and that's, that's not what they, you know, that's not what they said. They said, they didn't say, they didn't say we had to, you know, pull it from other departments. They said that we could use the reserves. But we did, you know, it's the idea of the balanced budget, we have to present the balanced budget, we have to not go past our levy limit. But I talked to them directly, so we're definitely going to have to talk to both entities because now we're hearing something different from our own solicitor, but...
Thank you. Councilor Rothenberg?
Well, let me introduce a third interpretation. I have a different understanding, I think, sort of a mixture of the two. My understanding was that we do need to balance the budget if we use this, that we would need to take from other departments. And the way I always saw this was that it is as though the mayor comes before us with a funding request for city services, and the school committee comes before us with a request for schools, and that they are both sort of the top... that they are both sort of the top of those two different parts of our city. And that if they have competing funding requests, then it would be up to us to balance them. And as to the financial orders from free cash, it was my understanding that council could initiate financial orders, but not in the budget. So the appropriation is a budget initiated by the mayor, and if we opt in, by the school committee as well. And there are all kinds of other appropriations that can be made throughout the course of the year. My consultations with Seawald and DLS last year were that Seawald and DLS had a differing opinion. Seawald felt that council could not initiate financial orders, that only the mayor can, and that Narcoitz had established that as his interpretation in his time as well. And DLS felt that it was up to our charter whether that could be done. DLS said there was no state law that prohibited us from being able to initiate financial orders. Seawald said it was a state law that prohibited us. And when he pointed to a state law, he pointed to one about the budget, which is a very unique appropriation and is not governing all other appropriations. So a little confusing, but in short, my, my understanding was that, yes, we would have to balance the budget if we opted in, and that whether or not we take from free cash or initiate other financial orders is a whole other matter. And I think I'm the only one who thinks that we can do that at this juncture, me and the, me and the DLS, as far as I understand. But I, different conversation than opting in.
Okay. We'll go to Director Nardi, and then to Counselor Elkins.
So I also spoke to the Department of Revenue and DLS about initiating orders. And they are, their statement to me was, yes, it would only be allowed if it was written in our charter. And Attorney Seawald's and my interpretation of the charter is that it's not in there. So it is not allowed for the council to bring forward a financial order.
Could we get, is it, could, would DLS issue a written opinion?
I can ask them.
That, I think that would be very helpful, because, you know, we've, you know, Counselor Maori and I had a meeting with a lawyer from DLS, Counsel Rothenberg did. And, you know, I'm sure they're being consistent, but sometimes you hear different things and you remember different things. So to have something written from them would be very helpful.
Valid point. I will ask.
Direct response?
A very, yep. Counselor Rothenberg.
So I tried very hard last year to get written statements from the DLS. They really don't like to do that. They don't like to have the liability of that. But one thing they can do for us, if we would agree as a council, is to bring in someone who could meet with us. And it's for when you're trying to navigate new things that you haven't really done before. So opt-in, or whether we could do financial orders would be a good use of that. My understanding is they have a bit of a wait time. The only other option was if we might be able to get them to write it down in an FAQ. That's one place where they feel sort of comfortable. But those only come out, you know, when they come out. So we could check in and see if they could do that again. But I also wanted to direct response to Director Nardi. We're not saying the same thing about the charter. My understanding was not that what was the opinion of the DLS was that it needed to be expressly written in the charter that we could do that. It was the opposite, that it would need to say that we couldn't. Because our charter clearly says that anything that's not clearly laid out is council's power. You could go to a court and make an argument about what is the standard practice, right? And do we have practices that maybe would indicate otherwise? So it's a point that could be argued. But it's certainly not, not prohibited by our charter in the, on the four pages and the four corners.
Thank you. Counselor Elkins.
I very much disagree with that. The executive, the executive, the delegation to the executive clearly encompasses this. That, putting that aside, the, the other thing that's sort of contemplated by the idea of doing, I think I understand that the, the argument is, is that it would be within the levy to do a mid-year appropriation after free cash was certified, so that we would still be within the levy, I think. And I would just propose that that is, that would be terrible budgeting practice. That would be, that would, that would be essentially trying to build our, the biggest portion of our budget, anticipating a mid-year appropriation that, based on factors that we don't know are going to be realized, and what those needs are. And people's jobs are going to be counting on that, and kids' classes, and it's, that's, that is unfathomably bad idea. And especially in this economic, I mean, what we're looking, what we're standing on the precipice of looking at the uncertainty fiscally. So however academic the discussion might be, that would be a very, very bad budgeting practice. I have a response.
Yeah. Sorry, was.
No, I just want to make.
Someone else had. Counselor Maori.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the council can make astoundingly bad financial decisions every meeting. I mean, the point is, you know, the point is that we have to do our due diligence, and the point is that we have a, you know, it requires a supermajority so that that doesn't happen. So, yeah, there's always going to be pitfalls financially. That doesn't mean we shouldn't have options in front of us.
I have a direct response as well.
Go ahead. Counselor Rothenberg.
Thank you. I don't think a mid-year appropriation is before us. I think the only reason we were talking about other appropriations was in the context of whether or not council could take from free cash. But what's before us is just whether or not we opt in. And it sounds like you want to take some time to understand and clarify whether or not that excludes taking from free cash, because that sounds like that could be something that might make your colleagues nervous. So you might be more likely to get an opt-in if you were able to confirm that we can't do that. And I think that, I just wanted to center us back on what we're talking about. And as the, as the discussion continues, we're just talking about opting in. And I, and I guess that's a question, do we want to center the conversation? Do we want to just table it all together right now, until we know whether we're dealing with the free cash or not the free cash as part of that? Do we want to talk about it in a hypothetical, where it doesn't touch free cash, and it's only a balancing? What would be most helpful for this discussion tonight?
Was that a question to Counselor?
To all of the council.
Okay. Well, I can say I have a number of unanswered questions. And we, in terms of the timeline, we have until May 30th, 31st. So it has to be 30 days before the end of the fiscal year in order to apply in this, in this budget cycle. So we have until our last meeting in May, which is May 21st, unless there was a special meeting. So there's, there's time to consider and to get more information. And so what I would suggest is that we do a referral to finance, and in the meantime, and perhaps get DLS to come to finance and answer our questions. But in the meantime, try to get answers to some of our questions, so that we can be more informed and then have a further discussion then.
I.
Counselor Moulton.
I will then move that we refer this to finance, and that Counselor Maori and I will work to get, to address these questions in a way that we, we get as much information as DLS can provide us in writing, we hope. And, and also, I think the, the question that Counselor Rothenberg raises about whether the charter needs to explicitly state that the council can do something, or whether her interpretation is correct, I think we need to get that question answered as well.
A direct response? Do you think that's related to the opt-in at all?
Counselor Rothenberg?
Yeah. Maybe I don't know how you like to.
Until you're called upon.
How would you like me to initiate a request for a direct response?
Say, could I have a direct response, and then be to be called upon?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know. Do you think that that question that I raised about whether the chart, do you think that has anything to do with the opt-in? It seems like you might, you might make that meeting more complicated if you bring in that secondary issue.
Counselor Moulton.
Well, you raised it in this discussion. So I, in that context, I feel that we need to be comfortable in understanding whether the council can initiate financial orders, as you, as you seem to think we can do. I mean, that's, that's relevant, yes.
To opting in?
Well, it's relevant to this entire discussion. About what would happen if, if we did choose to opt in, and then we chose to exercise the, you know, the ability to adopt a higher budget for the schools than the mayor had, had submitted. The money has to come from somewhere.
Point of clarification.
Are you, are you okay having a conversation? You're welcome to go back and forth if that's the case.
So, is that okay with you, if I respond?
Yes, yes, Counselor.
Thanks. So I think that the request of the school committee, their budget request, is not required in order for us hypothetically, if we were able to make a financial appropriation. I think that question is not related to the question of opting in, which is only related to budgetary appropriations. In other words, like, we just made a mid-year appropriation to the schools through the mayor? That's not related to, I mean, we did decide to roll something in. We happened to talk about it in terms of budgeting. But financial appropriations to the schools don't need to be made only in the context of the budget appropriation. So I think it's a separate conversation. I don't think it's related to opting in. Does that make sense? Or am I not saying it clearly?
It's something that you raised. So I disagree with your interpretation of the charter. So I guess if it's something that you want to pursue, then, then it's up to you to pursue it.
I, I think we could pursue it at a different time. I think it's just not related to opting in. I would, I would appreciate pursuing it. I just kind of want to stay focused on the timeline that we have to really focus on opting in.
Thank you both. Counselor Elkins.
I mean, I would argue that, that when we, when we take this to finance, you know, I'd certainly want to hear from the chair about, and hopefully would be given some latitude for us to explore on the committee what, what we, the questions we have, and, and we feel are pertinent to our, our decision-making. Another question I have, does, is there anything about this order that would apply to Smith, Smith-Vogue?
Yes.
Yes, it would.
I mean, would, could they, would they be in a position then to pass a budget in excess of what was recommended? And, and then we'd have to take that up as well?
Absolutely. That's my understanding. They're, they are a school, I mean, it, it uses the word school committee, but, you know, they, they have their Board of Trustees, which is a school committee. I mean, we're, we're, you know, one of the, we're the only municipality in the state that has two school districts. So it's, it's unusual. But, yes.
I'm glad we, I could be the only counselor in all of Massachusetts asking. I've already said that.
So is there a motion to refer?
Yes.
Sorry, did you already make that?
Yes.
I seconded.
And you sec, and you're seconding it. Okay, so, motion made by Counselor Moulton, and seconded by Counselor Clemmer, to refer to finance. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to name, you know, if they won't put something in writing or attend our meeting, I'm just trying to think how we can, I guess I will discuss that with you, President, if that happens. Because then what will happen, it will, it will be what just happened this last year, which is, I'm on the phone with them, I come back with this interpretation, you know. So we're going to have to decide. But maybe I will wait for that to be a problem first.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, I'm very glad that we're going to get those communications figured out. And I think that's very, very important here. And I'm very glad that it's been sent to finance.
Anyone who hasn't spoken? Okay, Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, I wanted to make a friendly amendment to the motion, that it would be also inviting the Budget and Property Committee. And I could share my reasons for that whenever it's appropriate.
You can share, you can share your reasons.
Great. So initially, I was thinking of inviting the mayor and the Budget and Property Committee. But I really think that the, the parties or the bodies that have an interest in exploring and pursuing this are the, the school committee and the city council. I think those are the two bodies that need clarification. I think if the mayor also wants clarification because she will be needing to sign an opt-in order, that makes sense. But I, but I want to really balance the, and center the voices of the school committee as well. I think it's important for them, if they're going to be advocating, that they also have an understanding of what is possible, and are able to ask questions of any experts who are there. I think they have the most on the line in this discussion.
So a friendly amendment requires unanimous consent of all of the council. So we can go ahead and.
Should I make a hostile amendment? I don't know.
I, I think it would be good to make a, an amendment that we can then debate in that form.
Great. So I'll withdraw the friendly and just a plain old amendment.
Okay. So could you state it again, and then it will need to be said?
Yes, for it to be a joint meeting of Budget and Property and Finance.
There needs to be a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Rothenberg, and seconded by Counselor Dubs, to invite, as, you know, they, they would have to agree, the Budget and Property Committee of the school committee to join the Finance Committee at their meeting.
When?
Undetermined, when, when it was scheduled. Discussion on that amendment. Well, I know that recently, the Finance Committee voted three to one to not have a joint meeting with Budget and Property. I don't know if anyone on the Finance Committee would like to speak to that, or if they, if this is, since this is a different matter with more focus, that that is something that they, they would be amenable to. I guess I'm, I'm hesitant to refer to a body that, you know, has already said they didn't want to talk, didn't want to do a joint meeting. But if this is a different circumstance, then that is, Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you. I think Counselor Rachel Maori knew that some of us were not going to be able to go on that date that you went. So you did go to that, correct? So when are you going to present what was talked about?
Yeah, at our, I was planning to do that, a little debrief at our next meeting. Yeah. We've been trying to schedule the Scanlon audit. It's, and we haven't heard back. But in, in any case, I was waiting for our next meeting. Yeah. We had a great, should I?
Thank you.
So just, just to clarify, that Counselor Maori attended at Budget and.
Yes, yes. Very fruitful.
Reporting back.
Okay.
It was an excellent experience. It was very fruitful. And I will, but I will report back, because it's not on the agenda. I think there's something else. Yeah.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Thank you for raising that. That's, that's a prudent thing to be aware of. And maybe, maybe then that's, that's not the right groups of people to have together. I wonder if maybe Vice President and President of both Council and Budget and Property, or Vice President and President, or Chair and Vice Chair of Finance, and Chair and Vice Chair of Budget and Property. Sorry. So strike everything, just that. Chair and Vice Chair of the two, maybe? Would they be amenable to getting together? Or is there some subset of these groups that could get together?
No Vice Chair to Budget and Property.
Okay.
And because they are a committee of two, of three, rather, only, two is a quorum. So only one person from Budget and Property can get together informally, and not in the formal meeting.
Right. And it could be a public meeting, a formal meeting, right?
Maybe. Counselor Elkins.
Well.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes, we're, we're talking about referring this to a council subcommittee.
Correct.
And that is the, that's the issue on the floor. Anyone will, can, you know, this will be widely publicized. Anyone can attend that.
And what I read as Counselor Rothenberg's motion was to invite Budget and Property to come to that meeting, and then it would be posted as a joint meeting. Obviously, if they didn't. they didn't accept, then that wouldn't happen. We can't create that. Yes, Counselor?
I would make sure that we invited any school committee member who wished to attend that meeting, to learn more about this issue, to attend that meeting. I don't, no, I don't see that this is a meeting of, there's nothing in this provision that requires opting in by the school committee. This is a city council matter.
Right.
I think the issue is that, you know, they, in terms of actual participation, because you can't, you can't, only one member could participate because of open meeting law without the whole committee being invited, and you have similar, however, they can, you know, participate in public comment as much as any member of the public can. So, it's that, it's the question of how much participation by members of that committee that we would like to see, and I think your point is there is not a, because this doesn't require action by the school committee, that it is outside of the purview.
That's correct.
Counselor Maori?
Yeah, so, I mean, they do have their own process around the opt-in, and it seems efficient for us all to be on the same page. I appreciate you trying to think of other, you know, kind of ways of doing that. Am I, I'm correct, right, that they need to opt in, I mean, they need to, they need to understand the process because it initiates with them?
I'm sorry, if I could make a direct response to answer your question, if you want.
So, if we opted in, the initiative would start with school committee. Council wouldn't, if we had the opt-in in place, council wouldn't initiate this. It would come from school committee, and it would go through Budget and Property.
That's one of our outstanding questions, is what is upon the recommendation of, is, because if, you know, say at their next school committee meeting, they vote a budget that, and then it won't, we won't know whether that's higher than what the mayor puts in her budget until the mayor releases her budget, nor will the school committee know. There's no, I don't think, requirement to then go back to the school committee. It's just whether that amount is higher.
Right. I just don't see the downside of them, us all being on the same page about this process, so.
Counselor Elkins, is that a direct response, or?
No, it's just a, well, yes, yes, it is a direct response.
Okay, go ahead.
I, it seems to me that the school committee will have some decisions of their own to make in terms of what that referral means. I mean, and I don't feel like we have a role in that, because it is the fact that we, as Counselor Jared said, they will know if their recommendation is more or less or the same as the mayor until the mayor comes out with hers. So, anything prior to that's going to be premature. I mean, we can't, we won't, we won't know if they need to refer something to us or make a recommendation, and, I mean, if I were sitting on that body, I'd want to sort of formalize that recommend, you know, that it was a recommendation, but, so, I think we have work to do, questions we have to answer pertaining to our work and how we go about it, and I respectfully don't see the school committee and the Budget and Property Committee as a part of that conversation at that point, as when we're deciding how it's going to work.
Counselor Rothenberg?
Yes, so, in the sense of whether or not they initiate the process, right, if it's just that they vote on a budget and that is the initiation, I think they are still inclined to want to know if their vote is a meaningful vote, if there is any sense in going high, right? So, in a sense, if we don't opt in, it really changes the landscape of what the school committee's work means at that budget vote. It is true that we don't technically have the mayor's budget yet and that she can make changes, but it's also true that at the last meeting, they all laid out what they would want, and most of them, if not all of them, wanted the strong budget, and the mayor put on the record that her preference was for the 4% budget, which was the lowest of the three. She still has time to change that, and they still have time to change that, but I think they go into their vote with a sense of where the mayor is coming from. I think there's good communication between them about that, and so the question is, what is the purpose of their budget vote? Does it have any chance of being heard by anyone apart from the mayor? Does it have a chance of being heard by the council? And the real reason that I want there to be some school committee involvement in consultation with the DLS, right, that's really what this meeting we're hoping, I think, is about. I know you're probably going to meet and discuss as well, but we're really talking about getting questions answered. I think that without really strong advocates for the schools in the room, there's a great chance that the right questions will not be asked. I really think it's important to have somebody who has the interests of the schools there, making sure we're not leaving stones unturned, because I don't think you're going to have the luxury of having a DLS meet with you often, if you're even able to get the one meeting. It's a big opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Perry?
I'm just wondering, you know, my understanding is that this will be a public meeting, people could be invited. This subcommittee that we're talking about could easily put forth questions that the Finance Committee could ask, correct, and at least one representative could be there to maybe be recognized by the Chair, to ask any follow-up questions. So, I'm just trying to figure out what we're, what we're really talking about, because I do believe that this is a city council matter, and that the Finance Committee has a lot of work that's going to need to be done about this, and a lot of questions that I think we will have, and there is an opportunity for communication back and forth, for people to present questions beforehand, and that's where I am.
Counselor Moulton?
Yeah, I also take exception to the insinuation that Counselors Maori, Elkins, Labarge, and myself are unable to ask the right questions, and that we don't have the schools uppermost in our mind.
Counselor Connor?
And I think the school committee will ask for as much as probably the highest amount, like they did last year, and like they've expressed that they want to ask for this year, and I don't think opting in is going to change anything for them. I mean, it might encourage them to ask for more, but, you know, they do that anyway, so, and I agree, they could be here and they could ask questions and participate in it that way, and they could, you know, hand in questions beforehand, too, if they have certain, you know, specific questions. So, you know, everybody's always invited, and somebody can represent them.
So, I'd like to bring the vote on the amendment up shortly. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
I don't feel that strongly about a joint meeting. I certainly don't want to torment neither Budget or Properties or my own Finance Committee, but we are dealing with an intense school budget season, and I want to name that this is an interpersonal issue, and if there's something we can do to, I mean, I think there's, I hear what you're saying, that beyond that, you don't think it's necessary, but I think we're at a place where we have to face, you know, face each other and learn to collaborate and not repeat last year's budget season, and, you know, I don't, I think if Chair Karen Foster was still there, this might be a different conversation, and I'm not even judging that, but I'm getting, I don't want to talk in circles about this. This is really serious. This is our schools, and if this is going to be a trend where we cannot collaborate with Budget and Properties, I would like to hear directly about that, and it doesn't have to be in a public meeting, so that we can discuss strategies around that, or bringing in a mediator, or whatever might help, because we really need to get to work with the budget season. Again, I don't feel that strongly about this. I think it would be good, because I think this is, you know, it sounds like the opt-in is kind of a complex thing, and actually, I'm more worried about whether we can get Ken from DLS to even be at this meeting, or if it'll just be us talking to each other, but in any case, that aside, guys, we don't, we all were really pretty miserable at the end of last budget season, and I would like to try to find ways to do things differently, and we need to have, in my opinion, options and avenues of communication open, and that doesn't mean subjecting people to things that they don't want, but it does mean being honest about that, and if it's, if there's something that's fixable, or there's something I can do as either Vice President or Chair to help with that, please let me know, because I don't want this to be a trend through the entire budget season, that we cannot meet with the school's finance body.
Thank you, Counselor Maori, for that. Is there any other, Counselor Elkins?
So, the difficulty that I'm having, and it is not interpersonal, I, well, I wouldn't say there are no interpersonal issues, however, that is not what is driving me. When we talk about collaboration, it has seemed to me that collaboration has always, and I'm not saying you, but in this context, has always meant, we agree with the view held by school committee, and until we do, there's been, I have talked with individual school committee members, I have talked with people in the community, I have said how I feel in here, and the fact of the matter is, is I continue to worry about the long-term stability, and I see it differently, and I, you know, there's no amount of, like, talking this out that is, I mean, we vote, we take our positions, we're not always going to come down on the same way, and so that's what I'm struggling with, is that what is the, what would be the purpose of more time and more public comment and more time just spent, you know, everybody entrenched doing their own things, when, you know, at some point, we vote, and that's what carries the day. So, I don't, I'm a no on this amendment. I want to do our work. I value the work that we do here, and I value the work the school committee does, and they have work to do, and I don't, I don't, I just question why we have to, like, this is the model, that is the only model of productive and collegial and respectful dialogue, is for us to all get in the same room with all the disagreement and tension, if we don't necessarily have to, and we can civilly take our votes and state our positions according to our convictions. That's why I don't. Can I just make a point of clarification, which is just, I appreciate what you're saying, and I think the thing about this meeting, what I was envisioning was there was going to be this imparting of information, that here in this room, three of us have different interpretations on, so it sounded like a good idea to have, it wasn't about debating with Budget and Property about it, it was about, you know, ideally, we have somebody there that we are asking the questions of from DLS. So, just to say that, you know, I think in a focused meeting, I hear what you're saying, and the reason I didn't feel that way is because this, in my vision, was this a focused meeting. That said, I don't, you know, I don't, you know, feel, you know, that that has to happen here, but I am concerned that there might be times in which we, it would be fruitful to meet with Budget and Property, and I just, that's why I wanted to make the offer to think about, you know, how that can be, but, yeah.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this amendment? Counselor Labarge, and then Counselor Moulton?
Thank you. I have to, you know, I heard tonight a school committee member, a brand-new member, come out and say how valuable it is working together in the communication. Right now, we're in a critical, critical situation. The school budget and our own budget, critical, and I'm hearing from residents already, in the situation that we're in, about are we going to be closing some schools, and I'm telling you, I'm getting, people telling me right now, they feel it should be done. We're in a critical mess, a critical mess, and I don't have a problem if somebody wants to come in from the other committee to come to Finance and talk. I think one of our counselors mentioned about having somebody come in with some communication or some questions. I don't have a problem with that at all, but it's like, we're going to have a lot of work to do in Finance Committee, city councilors, of the critical situation we're in, and it's not the mayor, it's not the Finance Director, it's not the school committee, it's what's happening with our charter schools. They are pitting our schools. That's what the problem is here, and it's happening everywhere.
Point of order, I think we're getting off of the subject that I'm getting, I understand, I'm getting tired.
It's a mess here.
Counselor, yeah, if you could, thank you. Counselor Moulton?
I'll be brief. Yes, I agree, Counselor Maori, there are times when it will be fruitful to meet with Budget and Property or any or other school committee members, but I don't think this is one of them. There's only one body that will vote whether or not to opt in, and that's the council, and the school committee does not have to vote on opting in. All they will do is, as they will do anyway, is vote a school budget. So, I don't think it's critical that we have a joint meeting. I would welcome any members who want to come and get that information that we're going to work on obtaining while, you know, during that meeting, sure.
I agree with Counselor Moulton. I think the Chair has discretion to invite one member, and that the other members can submit questions and can speak in the public comment portion as well, and so I think that that will be sufficient and will probably help the Finance Committee to focus. Anyone else?
We can withdraw the amendment.
No, well, let's vote on the amendment unless there's unanimous consent to withdraw it, because withdrawing requires unanimous consent.
Sure.
Is there unanimous consent to withdraw the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, the amendment's withdrawn, and we're back to talking about the referral to Finance. Is there further discussion on the referral to Finance? Okay, roll call, please, on referral of 25.238 to the Finance Committee. Yes?
So, if the DLS cannot be reached or cannot be brought in, can this come back to council for further discussion about what the purpose of that meeting will be?
So, the, I can certainly consult with the Finance Chair. The Finance Chair will need to, I mean, when we refer, you know, the Finance Committee has a certain amount of time, which is, it doesn't need, like, it doesn't need to be before the next meeting that it comes back to, but it does need to meet and discuss, but they can have more than one meeting if necessary.
And a second question? It needs to be referred back to us or brought back by you individually, is that right, before it comes back to council?
Good procedural question. If there is no referral, well, I wouldn't want to see, it would be, I wouldn't want to see a situation where Finance delayed so long that it was not feasible to vote on it in this year, so I would certainly bring something back before, you know, by May 21st.
Okay, thank you. So, there's a likelihood we won't see this on our next council agenda, in other words, because this process will probably take some time.
We don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Sherrill?
So, DLS has an FAQ that maybe answers some of these questions, or at least part of it, that I can email to all of you. I have a printout, so this is actually 2019. There's a revised 2020 version. I don't think the relevant section has changed between the two, but just in case, I can email you the 2020, but if you want to see this, you can... Oh, you do? Okay.
I want to see, I want to get all information myself, so, please.
We have a motion, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion to refer? Okay, roll call, please, on referral to Finance.
Counselor Labarge? Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg?
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And we look forward to the scheduling of that meeting. Brings us to the second order, 25.232, an order to approve Volinger APR. And do we have someone from Planning and Sustainability, or?
I believe Director Mish is on Zoom.
Okay. And, and she is a co-host as well. How, how do you want to proceed? Do you want Director Mish to present?
Certainly, sure.
Okay. Welcome, Director Mish.
Good evening, council. Good to you. This is a pretty straightforward request. Just to explain, the request is to approve an agricultural preservation restriction, which is sort of, which means there's a purchase of the right to develop a piece of property that, and that money goes to, essentially, the purchases to protect the land permanently from development for the purposes of agriculture. And the city is not involved in the transaction in this situation, but it's required that the city council vote to approve it. So the order in front of you is for the city council to approve this transaction, which would then put a permanent restriction on the property. And it's sort of the best of all worlds for the city, because, you know, we don't have oversight or enforcement of the agricultural preservation restriction. It'll be Kestrel Land Trust will hold the restriction, and there isn't any, you know, financial transaction from the city's standpoint. But nevertheless, city council needs to vote to essentially, you know, assent to this arrangement.
Thank you. I have a question. Is, so this is all farmland?
Um, yes, there is, well, it's a part, so the portion that will be protected is, is farmland, yeah.
Okay. And is there any public access, or because it's all fields, or, you know, it wouldn't be appropriate?
Right. And we don't have any, right, so there's no public access. It's intended for agricultural purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Councilor Mayory?
Yeah, this is maybe for Director Mish. I don't know if, I think Volinger might still be here, Mark Volinger. But anyway, my question, well, anyway, it's a beautiful piece of land. I'm curious, I know we've had flooding issues with those farms before, and I just was curious how that's going. Like, they're, you know, usable, they're certainly beautiful, but I was curious about, I keep saying that, let me see if I can find him. True farmers. You know what? They probably don't stay up this late.
So, yeah, so Mark.
Yeah.
Kestrel Land Trust. There was someone else as well.
There was Mark Volinger.
But I'd be happy to recognize. Mark, which, could you make them a co-host?
I'm seeing Macabreski, Madalai, and I'm not.
Oh, you don't see Mark?
Nope. Mark Wamsley, Kestrel Land Trust.
I have to mute. Okay. Mark, can you?
Hi.
Hi. Good evening. Sorry.
Good evening.
Sorry.
Good to see you again. Yes, I don't know the particular lending status of the property in there. But I do know the, it's not the entire farm that's going to be going under the agricultural preservation restriction. Hopefully, ultimately, the entire farm will be protected, but a portion of it is under another MR program right now, so that wasn't eligible. But the two sections that will be going under this APR, I do not believe are particularly wet sections of the property. Yeah. So just, so hopefully, they should be okay from flooding.
Great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Are there any other questions? So this is an order, and does not need to be referred by default. It will show up at our next meeting to be voted upon.
Can we refer to the consent agenda?
It's not in our rules to do that, but I suppose we could suspend the rules and do that.
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules to refer to consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Elkins.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Clemmer to suspend the rules so that we may refer this item to the consent agenda of our next meeting, thus perhaps saving us the same amount of time that we will spend suspending the rules. Happy to do that. Councilor Rothenberg?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Roll call, please, on suspension of rules.
Councilor Mayory.
Uh, yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay. Rules are suspended, and this has been referred to the consent. Do you feel like I worded that? Do we need another vote to, to, now we've suspended the rules, right? But we haven't actually referred it to the consent agenda. Okay. Another vote to refer it to the consent agenda now that that's permitted.
Move to refer to consent.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Moulton and seconded by Councilor Labarge to refer this to the consent agenda of our next meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor Labarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayory.
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously as well. It will be on the consent agenda of our next meeting. Thank you, folks who stayed, and thank you, Director Mish. Now we now come to the four final orders of the evening, and I'll read the process note. These are all home rule petitions. Process note, "The House Clerk's Office contacted Representative Savados's office to notify her that these home rule petitions filed on the city's behalf need a new order/authorization from the city council with a raised stamp/seal. Local approvals are only valid for the current legislative session and one subsequent concurrent session. The orders seeking special legislation were adopted in January of 2021 and May of 2022. My understanding is that they must be reintroduced as new orders for the city council's official action/vote, so that they may be refiled with the legislature if the city is still interested in pursuing them." So the four orders are, three related to elections and voting, 25.233, "An order amending the charter to allow resident non-citizens to vote in municipal elections," 25.234, "An order amending the charter to allow residents 16 years of age or older to vote in municipal elections," and 25.236, "An order for special legislation relative to ranked choice voting in the city of North Hampton." So with the council's permission, I would like to take up these three. And I understand that Councilor Moulton, who served on the Charter Review Commission and was the sponsor of one of these, would like to speak to these items. Is it okay to do that, this slightly out of order? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, President Jarrett. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to these three as a group.
Yes.
And for those who don't know, I did chair the Charter Review Committee. This work was done in 2019. And the councilors today also received an email from Sam Hopper, who is the vice chair, with a longer written summary of why we support refiling all of these, all three of these home rule petitions. The non-citizen voting was approved unanimously by the Charter Review Committee, and then was also approved unanimously by the city council on January 21st of 2021. We, the Charter Review Committee endorsed this recommendation for allowing non-citizens to vote in municipal elections after favorable testimony by 15 speakers at the public forum we held October 29, 2019. The committee, Charter Review Committee believes this is consistent with the city's commitment to equity, fostering an open and welcoming community, embracing diversity, and promoting a sense of inclusion for all. And just for context, it continues to be illegal for non-citizens to vote in federal and state elections. There are a handful of individual communities that have been, that have allowed non-citizen voting in local elections, including in New England, Burlington, Montpelier, and Winnetka, Vermont. We would be the first in Massachusetts. The vote 16 also was endorsed unanimously by the Charter Review Committee and by the city council, also on January 21st of 2021. The Charter Review Committee approved this recommendation that the, it was actually made by the mayor's youth commission at a public forum we held on election issues on April 30th of 2019. Leaders of the commission cited benefits, including increasing voter turnout and encouraging civic engagement at a younger age. They also advocated for high school students having the right to vote for candidates who will make decisions about issues directly affecting them, such as the school budget. Youth commission leaders also pointed out that many high school students already are activists on many issues and have the maturity and interest of the responsible voter. And again, for context, there are many communities in Massachusetts which have similar home rules in the legislature. Momentum is building. We hope that by refiling the North Hampton request, that we will help add to that momentum. Again, it is, no states have adopted vote 16. It is only, again, a handful of communities, including Brattleboro, Vermont. And, and finally, you heard earlier this evening from Bob Bull Rice, who served on the Charter Review Commission and then chaired the Rank Choice Implementation Committee that came up with the actual procedure for ranked choice voting that would be used in North Hampton. And I would, I would add, I don't think he mentioned that the home rule, if it's approved by the legislature, there would also be a referendum in North Hampton before the city would adopt ranked choice voting. This was, this was approved unanimously, again, by the Charter Review Committee and the city council. The city council voted it most on May 19th of 2022. Rank choice voting's been used in Cambridge since 1942, and East Hampton since 2021. Elsewhere in the U.S., it's used in 27 states for some or all elections, including Maine, where it's now used for state and federal elections. I won't, I won't repeat what, what Mr. Bull Rice said, other than to point out that in addition to hearing support for ranked choice voting at that forum, the Charter Review Commission, Committee held in 2020, the statewide referendum on ranked choice voting, which failed, received 68% positive votes in North Hampton. So I, we are convinced that there is support. So I would urge, I would urge us to, to support the refiling of all three of these home rules that are the last of the work that the Charter Review Committee did about six years ago.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. Councilor Labarge?
Yes, I attended every meeting, every meeting. And I was so impressed as a city councillor, the students we had from the high schools coming in and talking about driving their cars at 16 years old. I didn't have a problem with that. I didn't have a problem with either any three of these. Period. So, Stan, and you know that, you know, other councilors attended those meetings. And they were critical, critical. You look at, you know, I've had some people say to me at 16 years old, you agree with that? I said, yes. I said, I've seen our high school students marching with protesting, and all of us, families got in together with them. They did an excellent job, an excellent job. Got up there and spoke elegantly of exactly what they needed in their schools. Period. I said, I've seen, I said, 18-year-olds, 22-year-olds drive ridiculous. And I feel that at 16 years old, there are many of them that are well-educated and can follow the rules also. So I agree about supporting all three of these, because as a councillor, I attended those meetings. And Patty Healy also spoke tonight from Ward 6. We're all involved. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I failed to mention one thing. Thank you, Councilor Labarge. I failed to mention that the home rules require support from the mayor. I'm very pleased that Mayor Sherrill continues to support all three of these as well.
Councilor Mayory?
Yeah, just to say that, you know, as a, when we were running as a new councillor, I was just so excited and proud to join the city government because of these initiatives. They're really, I mean, they're groundbreaking, they're bold, and they're fair and equitable. And it was just, I remember going to the Charter Review meetings and just being like, this is amazing. What a great community we live in. So, thanks.
Councilor Elkins?
Can we move these to the consent agenda?
We have suspended the rules, but let me just lay out the, yeah, similarly, we may refer these to, but we don't have to. And by default, they will come up again in two weeks on the agenda.
Well, question?
Yep.
Although it wasn't this council, so maybe it doesn't pertain. But since they've already passed, could we vote on them tonight? It's not really the first time they've come for a vote.
We would need to suspend the rules.
Could move to suspend the rules?
But are you making that motion?
I think, I think we shouldn't belabor the point of unanimously passed previous legislation, is what I think. So I would move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion made by Councilor Elkins and seconded by Councilor Labarge to suspend the rules only on these three that we are currently talking about.
I would actually take them, there's four, right?
Yeah.
I would take them as a group and, and, and suspend the rules for all four.
Second.
It's already been.
Oh, good.
Second, Councilor Labarge.
With my minute.
Okay. Well, I'm going to speak for not doing the broker's fees, as the Housing Partnership has already put it on their agenda to discuss this, this issue on Monday. And I appreciate hearing their, their thoughts, or if there's anything, I mean, possibly, there might be something we want to change in that regard, just simply because, yes, Councilor Elkins?
Why did you let me talk?
I'm so into adding that fourth one.
Because you get to make the motion.
I think she wants to suspend you.
So I would respectfully ask if there's even this consent to remove that one. We can always talk about that one separately when we get to it. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules if we vote tonight for the three related to elections and voting. Is there further discussion on suspension of rules? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor Labarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayory.
Yes.
And Councilor Moulton.
Yes. Okay, that, the rules have been suspended.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Moulton and seconded by Councilor Elkins to approve 25.233, 25.234, and 25.236, the orders amending the charter and for special legislation related to voting in elections. Further discussion? I'll just say, I continue, I appreciate the reference to the member also attending the Charter Review the Charter Review Committee specifically where some of these were brought up, and I, you know, continue to feel that these are important additions. Okay, roll call please on approval of those three.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Klemmer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayory.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
And Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Okay, those pass unanimously and will be sent on to Representative Sabadosa. And is it only the House that does the home rules?
Yes.
Okay. But Senator Comeford also fights for them, and to continue that request. So that brings us to our last item on the agenda, 25.235, an order for special legislation relative to broker's fees. And this is upon the recommendation of Counselor Alex Jarrett, Rachel Mayory, and Mayor Shera. And so, did you want to start, or shall I start?
Go for it.
In terms of introducing it? Okay. So this came out of a recommendation that was in a Housing Partnership report. The Housing Partnership, back in 2019, created a report assessing the barriers to fair housing, and I was privileged to serve on the Housing Partnership prior, while we, and worked on that report, prior to being elected to City Council. And the, so, in that report, there are, it talked about how two-thirds of landlords use a broker that charges 60% or more of a commission on, so not only do you have to pay first, last, security, then you also pay the 60, or I've seen 75% now, in addition. And that creates a barrier to, to, because you have to, you know, come up with that additional money immediately, that comes up, that constitutes another barrier, especially for those who are on Section 8 or other vouchers, or on disability, because the vouchers won't pay for those fees. So that's something that then, you know, you have to come up with on your own, and the case of those on disability, tenants are disallowed from having more than a certain amount of money in your bank account. So it creates all these, these barriers. There, we had a whole bunch of, we had a couple of forums, we had an official forum, and then we also had discussion. And we heard from a variety of community members, I met with a variety of community members, and one of the pushbacks was, you know, that some landlords may pass this on to their tenants in the form of increased rent. That would be if the market allowed that. But even if that happens, the barrier to entry is reduced, in that that's spread out over a period of time, and you, and you don't have that, that issue where you have with the vouchers. And so, there's, there's a lot more to say about this, but I just wanted to give that, that brief overview. And we also were clear that this doesn't prevent a tenant from independently hiring a broker to help them. It just means that if you are applying for housing with, with a particular landlord and you are required to go through a broker, that you would not be required to pay them, that, that fee, that the landlord would pay that fee instead. So since this has been enacted as a home rule, the legislatures, there's now bills in the legislature to do this statewide, and the governor has also said that, that she is interested in something statewide. And, you know, as we heard from Ace Taylor earlier, what the governor is putting may not be what we want. So this is, I think, a very timely measure to re-up and say, actually, what we want is this, this requirement, that. So that's an introduction. Do you want to?
No, it's fine. Yeah, no, just to say, thanks to the Housing Partnership, that probably was the first time I worked with Ace Taylor, and it's, this is complex stuff, and it was great to have, it was great that we have a Housing Partnership and how thoughtful they were. So it was a great collaboration with the mayor as well. Thank you, Mayor.
And?
Can I just note, I was actually a counselor at the time.
Were you?
Yeah, I mean, this is how long.
That's funny.
It's how long we've been doing this, folks, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, that's wild.
Yeah. Just kind of talking now. So we've been supporting this a long time.
Yeah. I didn't think it was that long ago. I think that's probably what it was, yeah. Sorry.
So the Housing Partnership is interested in talking about this on Monday. I would be interested to hear what they have to say before we vote on it, and if potentially there's some change in, you know, given that the legislature and the governor are interested, if there's some wording change or something that would be beneficial, I would want to leave that opportunity open for that. Other thoughts, other questions? Councilor Perry.
Thank you. I just want to say, it has been a long process, and I was part of some of the forums. We did have a joint meeting between Legislative Matters and Community Resources in my last term for it, and I learned a lot. And, and just on the record, as a, you know, working class person who rents his living space, I am so for this, and I don't have words for it. So thanks for continuing this long fight, and, you know, we'll keep doing it.
Okay, then this will come, this will be an order on our agenda on April 17th, and we'll have heard from the Housing Partnership by then. And there's no action needed. So that is done. Is there any new business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilor Elkins, seconded by Councilor Klemmer. Roll call please on adjourn.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Klemmer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayory.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
And Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously, we are adjourned.